Is it me, or are these lights are not up all the way? I'm not complaining. It's actually much more comfortable. I don't know what the video looks like. I would love to know, hey, Callison, maybe you could ask him over. Look peek at the video. Does it look okay? Because he doesn't have these lights on. Oh, well, I was gonna ask, like, does the video look okay without them? Because it's, is it? Okay. Because you're looking at it on Zoom right now, huh? Yeah. Okay, alright. Yeah. There we go. Lights, camera, action. Well, that's, that's, that's normal.
That's normal.
Yeah. No, I know, it's much more comfortable without the lights on. I'm not opposed to. You are the best, my friend. Thank you, sir. Okay, welcome, everyone. We're gonna call our meeting back to order with a roll call from our city clerk, Kathy Valdez.
Your records shall reflect that all members are present.
Our city attorney, Walter Chung, will bring us out of closed session.
The city council took no reportable action in closed session today.
Councilmember Green, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Please rise, remove all hats and hoods, repeat after me. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Who was our constituent that gave us the great idea to get the spreaders for the flags? Oh, Captain Boyce gave us that idea. Captain Boyce, thank you for the good suggestion to get the spreaders for the flags. It looks very good. Okay. Now, our city clerk, Kathy Valdez, has some procedural items to cover.
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District ordinance 2006-1. I would like to remind everyone that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum at the meeting and to conduct themselves in a courteous manner. The ordinance was adopted to allow for public input and facilitate city business without disruption in the meeting. Applause is appropriate for items listed under the presentation portion of the agenda only. Students wishing to receive credit for attending this evening's meetings must stay for a minimum of one hour. However, we ask that you stay for the completion of an item rather than leaving in the middle of a discussion. When you are ready to leave, you may ask one of the staff members at the back of the room to sign your paper. Thank you.
Thank you very much. To speak on an item on tonight's agenda, please fill out a speaker slip with the number of the item you'd like to speak on and give it to the clerk's secretary staff here on the dais. Speaker slips are available on the table just outside the city council chamber. For members of the public participating via Zoom, use the raise your hand feature to indicate that you'd like to speak. By clicking the raise hand feature or press star nine on your touchstone phone, we will announce when to raise your hand to indicate that you would like to make a comment on a specific item being discussed. Speakers will have three minutes each to address the city council. And we'll go to our city manager, John Conley, for approval of tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes to this evening's agenda.
Okay, we have one presentation this evening, so I'd like to invite my fellow council members to join me at the lectern for that presentation. Okay. We, we have a proclamation tonight declaring October 2024 as Cyber Security Awareness Month in the City of Vista. And tonight, our IT manager is here to accept the proclamation. Very good. Chris Schukert. Okay. Chris, Chris is new to the City of Vista, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how many?
I'm six months in.
Six months in, very good. All right, well, we're gonna let you hang on to this proclamation. You get to kind of show that off to everybody while I read it. Okay. Whereas many of our neighboring agencies have been hacked and embarrassed by cybersecurity. And this is not on the proclamation. I'm going off script here. Many of our neighboring agencies have succumbed to this, and we don't want that to happen here, so you got a big job to prevent that from happening, okay? Seriously, a very, very big concern. We don't want that to happen here. The City of Vista, but I trust you're equal to the challenge. The City of Vista recognizes its vital role in identifying, protecting, and responding to cyber threats that may have a significant impact on our residents and collective security and privacy. Whereas the National Cyber Security Alliance and the United States Department of Homeland Security has designated October as Cyber Security Awareness Month. Whereas in today's environment, various entities, including individuals, businesses, nonprofits, government organizations, academic institutions, and the local economy are increasingly reliant on information systems and technology for the execution of business activities, participation in commerce, information access, communication, and the provision of essential services. And whereas the prevalence of cyber threats is on the rise, and the repercussions of cyber attacks have proven to be devastating for both individuals and organizations, whereas it is imperative that cybersecurity education and awareness reach all sectors, including large corporations, small businesses, financial institutions, schools, government agencies, and the home user, and anyone utilizing the internet. Whereas the security of cyberspace is a collective responsibility, and each of us plays a crucial role in recognizing cyber threats, understanding cybersecurity fundamentals, and adopting industry-best practices to enhance the security of the City of Vista, its residents, local businesses, and the economy. Now, therefore, I, as the mayor and the members of the Vista City Council, hereby encourage all individuals to educate themselves about cybersecurity and to apply that knowledge in practice to ensure the safety of our interconnected community against cyber threats, and hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as Cyber Security Awareness Month in Vista. All right. Now, Chris, what is the number-one way that organizations fall victim to hacking?
Clicking.
Yes. Clicking on the wrong thing because you got fished, or what do they call it? Human engineering, right?
Social engineering.
The social engineering. The bottom line is, we're giving our passwords to people that are trying to get them. If we don't give our passwords to the wrong people, the odds of being hacked go way down. But the hackers know the best and easiest way to hack us is to trick us into giving our passwords. So you want to always make sure, do things like check the URL, right? That's in your address bar. Make sure that before the dot com, it has the name of the website you really think you're going to. If you see anything fishy, don't click on it. In fact, don't click on any links in your emails. Go to, go to your normal web address for your bank, for any of your online services. Don't click the links. Just open a browser and go where you normally go and log in. And if anybody says you're gonna get locked out of your account if you don't sign in, do not do that. It's a total scam. So I, as a, as an employer, a business owner, I fear this every day that, you know, it's easy to fall prey. So, and I'm sure you're discussing this with our employees. This really keeps me awake at night. A couple of our hospitals, some of our, you know, our sewage treatment facility, we've had a lot of breaches. And I really, you know, I encourage all of you as young people and some, you know, youngish people, but business owners, everybody, take this very seriously. It's, it's a really big deal. And, you know, I watched a documentary, the North Korean government is spending billions and millions of dollars. It's like a state enterprise over there to hack American governments and businesses and this ransomware stuff. So keep an eye out, folks, be vigilant, and go out and learn what you can do to protect yourself. So, thank you again. Keep us safe.
What's your favorite food?
Okay. We jest, but seriously, that is a really, really big deal. All right. That's the end of our presentation. So we're to that part of the meeting where we're gonna begin the business, and we would ask you to refrain from any applause or other outbursts during the remainder of the meeting. We will now move to oral communications. Any member of the public may address the council on agency-related matters that are not on the agenda by requesting to speak during this section of the agenda. If you're participating via Zoom, use the raise your hand feature or press star nine at this time if you would like to speak. The number of speakers that will be heard during this segment is limited to 10. Any remaining speakers will be heard under the second oral communications item. We do have, it looks like we just have one public speaker tonight. Aaron Pride. Mr. Pride, please come forward. You all have three minutes.
Hello. Hello, hello. Green council members and City of Vista, thank you for your time. Before I start this topic, I'd like to let you guys know this is a sensitive topic, and please remember that I'm, my intent is to focus on behavior, not people or positions. Discrimination does not need to be intended to happen. It's something that's built into our habits and it falls into the blind spots of our biases when it's not acknowledged. And today, I'd like to show how that is a case that's been happening in Vista around our enforcing of laws, using a personal example. The afternoon of May 5th, 2024, I walked out to my car to find a citation on it. And I look at it, what it's for, and it was for missing front license plate, which is confusing. I've had a front license plate for a while, never had issue with it, but I understand for laws of laws. But I look around down the street, and I see many cars without front license plates, and none of the other ones have tickets. And I go to assess what the differences are between my car and all these other cars. And the only thing difference is, all these cars are newer, fancier models, and their electric cars naturally don't have front license plates. So they didn't get fined for these things. It seems clear for me that this ticket wasn't charged on the principle of the law, but more based on discrimination of people, based on the assumption of their financial class, with my car being a 2800 fit, showing its years, is an older model of a car. And as I've been hit with this, I've been paying attention a lot more around Vista and everything. And I've been seeing plenty of newer model cars without these license plates, and plan of law enforcement completely being okay with this and no issues. So it's strange that the only time I see this issue is on vehicles that look like they belong to people who have a lower financial income status. And, and so, I guess in conclusion, what I'm trying to say is that if we're gonna enforce laws, we should do it targeting issues that we actually care about and not targeting people of low income who are gonna hurt the most from these charges. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close the opportunity for oral communications at this time, and that will bring us to tonight's consent agenda. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk secretary by using the raise their hand feature on Zoom or by pressing star nine. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. We have five consent items this evening. Deputy Mayor Melendez.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Councilmember Green.
Second.
Seeing no other requests for discussion, please cast your votes. That item is approved unanimously. That'll bring us to our first public hearing this evening. This item is regarding code amendments and fees relating to commercial cannabis business and temporary cannabis events at Bringle Terrace Park. The public hearing is now open. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raise their hand feature, by pressing star nine, or submitting a request to speak card here at the dais. Speakers will be called upon after the presentation. Our community development director, Joe Vaca, will provide a report on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Franklin, and members of the city council. So the first code amendment will address operational hours for retail cannabis to allow operating hours to be increased to 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, which will align with state regulations. However, medicinal sales will still be limited from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The code amendments also include introduction of a penalty schedule, which mirrors the penalty schedules that have been established for tobacco retailers and facilities. And so if there's a violation of sales at a business, the first violation could result in a $1,000 fine and required training. A second violation within a three-year period would require a 60-day suspension. And a third violation within a three-year period could require a one-year suspension, with the fourth violation ultimately leading to revocation. Now, I'm gonna talk about code amendments as it relates to cannabis cultivation. So first of all, cannivation, excuse me, cannabis cultivation will be prohibited outdoors. It must be enclosed within a full enclosed building and conducted within a fully enclosed building. And authorized locations with the code amendments will be in the research light industrial zone within the business park. And it will require a special use permit to go through a public hearing process before the planning commission. And locations must be outside a 600-foot radius from any daycare or youth-oriented facility or school. And they also must be outside a 600-foot radius of any existing residential. There are a variety of license types, that the smallest are specialty cottage indoor at 500 square feet, and it goes up to medium indoor facilities between 10,000 to 22,000 square feet of total canopy. And the code amendments will limit the maximum number of commercial cannabis cultivation licenses to three total within the city. There's also a cultivation tax rate that's proposed, and it's gonna start in this fiscal year at $17.40 per square feet of canopy. And it would be subject to consumer price indexing of the San Diego Carlsbad regional area. Now, I'm gonna talk about the application process for cultivation. It will be a lottery system. And the lottery system will be used to select the initial three businesses, and it will also establish a waiting list. And one of the applicants will be an equity applicant. That's a requirement that that must include an equity applicant out of the three. And then the waiting list, once it's established, will expire once all three cannabis cultivation businesses are operational. The fees were outlined for the cannabis cultivation permitting procedures and licenses in the agenda report, and they're provided here for the public. And now I'm gonna talk about temporary cannabis events at Bringle Terrace Park. And first, there's code amendments to Chapter 812, Smoking in Public Places, and Chapter 128, which is park events. And those are simple updates to allow smoking of cannabis if it's associated with consumption at a permitted event at Bringle Terrace Park. And then we're updating Chapter 1213, Events at Parks, to establish a process and procedure for permitting temporary cannabis events. So these regulations are being established to allow up to two temporary cannabis events per year at Bringle Terrace Park. And we're establishing standards that are intended to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the participants and the community. So there's a two-step process that's being established for permitting temporary cannabis events at the park. The first step is going to be a pre-screening application that will go through the city manager's office. And it will require a Vista Business License and State Cannabis Event Organizer's License, a map and description of the event, and the names of the organizations and principles of the event promotion, the estimated number of persons and vendors, and a description of parking arrangements, and including a designated ride-share area. And the other requirements associated with the pre-screening application will include the times of the event, the number of vehicles and noise that could be generated from the event, a description for emergency medical services, insurance with a minimum policy of $2 million, naming the city as additional insured, refundable cleaning deposits. And then we're proposing an application processing fee that's attached via resolution for the city council's consideration of $2,788. The next step in the process will be to work with the city to establish a revenue-sharing license agreement. Once that final agreement is prepared, it must be executed within 10 business days. And it will require a negotiated percentage of gross revenues or a flat fee or a combination, whatever is negotiated by the city. And it'll incorporate all of the event conditions. And it's important to point out that advertising of events will be prohibited prior to there being an executed final agreement. So the requirements for temporary cannabis events. First, applicants must submit their applications no more than 18 months, but no less than 90 days before the first day of event that's proposed. And they must complete the pre-screening applications, which are first come, first served. And they must obtain all local and state licenses. Retailers must also be affiliated with a valid City of Vista Business License and Commercial Adult Use Cannabis Business License Operator in compliance with our local code. And temporary cannabis events that are to be conducted at Bringle Terrace Park can be at least one day, but no more than two consecutive days, and they may not be on holidays. Further regulations are outlined that cannabis consumption must not be visible from any public place outside the designated event area. Patrons must be 21 years of age or older. Alcohol and tobacco will be prohibited at these events. Cannabis goods must be transported by licensed distributors. And consumption must be expressly permitted based on state temporary cannabis event license. And if consumption is permitted, there must also be EMTs present for the duration of the event. Additional requirements outline that the retailers, again, must comply with state law and the city's local cannabis laws and all onsite cannabis sales and consumption. Security personnel must be hired for the duration of the event. There must be driver's license scanners to verify age. And again, they must provide a minimum of $2 million or more in insurance. And they must also agree to indemnify the city as part of the execution of the license agreement. All of the waste must be disposed in waste receptacles in accordance with state law. They must comply with our noise ordinance, and the hours would not be outside of 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Parking arrangements must be appropriately made, and they must also include a designated ride-share area. Security deposit will be required. All the rules must be followed, and city officials may stop events if there's an issue that significantly warrants addressing public safety. Events must not impair accessibility for disabled persons. We are proposing in the code amendments a public noticing procedure of at least 30 calendar days prior to an event to be posted at the park site and also to notify all owners of adjacent properties. City must be provided access by all officers and/or agents of the city during an event. And if there are issues that come up, such as inclement weather that could damage the park, or there's an unsafe condition, then a temporary cannabis event license agreement could be revoked. And so that concludes our presentation, and there's several ordinances. I'm just gonna go through them very quickly. First is to introduce and adopt an ordinance as reflected on increased hours of operation. Next is to adopt an ordinance to address suspension and to address violations. Next is to adopt an ordinance for the permitted uses to require SUP in the business park-specific plan for cultivation. Next is to adopt an ordinance that introduces a whole new chapter, 5.97, to allow for commercial cannabis cultivation. And then next is an ordinance amending chapters 8.12, 12.08, and 12.13 relating to temporary cannabis events at Bringle Terrace Park. And then finally, there's a city council resolution that is proposing various fees for commercial cannabis cultivation and the pre-screening application to cover staff's costs. And that concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for questions. But I just also want to say I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that this couldn't have been done without the efforts and teamwork of the city manager's office and the city attorneys, Walter Chung and Amanda Guy, and then, of course, Kathy Valdez and Mike Pacheco. We all worked very closely together, and they were all instrumental in pulling this together.
Very good. Seeing no request for public comment, we'll go on to, we'll close the opportunity for public comment at this time, and we'll start with councilmember Joe Green.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple of questions for you on the policy. Overall, I just want to say thank you. I know that we're at the tip of the spear on this. I know that it's a little bit different type of policy to try to invoke. I just want to make sure, as far as the main things that we're doing, they're in line with the state of California policies, right? As far as for temporary cannabis events?
Yes, that's correct.
Good. One, a couple of the questions I had is, as far as the $17.40 per square foot per canopy for cultivation, is that industry standard across the board? Do we have other cities that have cultivation taxation that is similar to that? Do we do some research on that?
So that was actually passed by voters when we took taxes to the vote of the people.
What do you mean?
So we took various taxes in anticipation of additional uses coming up. So in 2018,
Okay, so when we did measures, in addition to that, we did do two measures, I remember. We're so smart. Love it. Awesome. Great. Thank you. Thank you, voters, by the way. Everybody vote. If you're 18, make it happen. From a lottery system standpoint, you said one of them is gonna be an equity recipient, and the other two will either be standard recipients or equity recipients. I, under my understanding, that's gonna mean there's gonna be two separate lotteries, one equity lottery, and then one lottery that includes all applicants?
Yes, we're gonna make sure that we have a system that allows for a minimum of one equity candidate.
Okay, so you may have one lottery that's simply for the equity candidates, and then another lottery that includes everybody as a whole?
That's correct. And it depends on how many applications we get. If we get one equity and two standard, and we only get three, we may not need a lottery.
May not need a lottery. Okay. And we may, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry. So we're actually going to draw. So if the first one's an equity, then everybody else, it won't matter whether they're equity or not. If the first three we draw are not equity, that third person gets put on the waitlist, and we draw the next, and we keep drawing until we get an equity person.
Oh, so we'll have a long waitlist? Okay. Okay. But the first equity applicant drawn will be locked in and reserved. And in the event you draw two equity applicants back to back, we couldn't have more than one, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Sounds good. I appreciate you explaining that to me. Other question was, two events per year in the property. I don't know why we, why we're limiting it to two per year. Was there a reasoning that came up with that? Is there a way to do like?
Yes.
Five per year, six per year?
So in collaboration with Recreation Community Services, the park is used frequently for other public events.
Okay.
And so we wanted to make sure that it was available for everyone.
Okay. And are there not, like, six weekends a year that the park isn't currently used?
Well, to have an event this size.
Oh, that closes down the park? So you're talking about availability for the community? Okay, well, let's see how it goes. My thing is, is if they're gonna be revenue drivers for our community, and they're gonna be great additions to our community, perhaps a future council might say, hey, we can have a couple more of these, you know? Because we also shut it down for the, you know, the Highland Games and a few other events, so. events. So I think that, you know, the more events that make us a destination, you know, city are pretty freaking good, so. All right, I will not oppose that at this point in time. One question I had, you had 90 days before the event after you're initially, like, pre-approved or something like that? You have to be notified from the city for the event? Is there a reason it's 90 days instead of 60 days?
It's actually, so that section is actually that people can apply 18 months--
I know--
In advance.
But 90 days--
But no later than 90 days. Exactly.
And my question for you on that is, why? Is it not possible to process an application in 60 days?
No, it's not.
It's not possible? Okay. If it's not possible, it's not possible.
And the truth is, is that they need to have so many state licenses before they even come to our door.
Yeah. And most of them do, I mean, but in order to get the actual event approved, they give you their state licenses, you say they can do it, and then we still have to send it off to the state. So I know there's a long time, I just wasn't sure what the timeframes were. And that's standard industry procedure as far as temporary events of this size, I would assume.
That's based on our research, and it's also based on our park operations.
Okay, sounds good. And then, let's see, first come, first served. So as far as the events go, it's just get your applications in the second the applications become available, and we'll vet you, figure out if you're, you know, acceptable applicant, and kind of go from there?
Yes. They'll go through the pre-screening event. If the calendar through Parks and Recreation Community Services shows availability for that timeframe, they'll go through the pre-screening. Once they get through that process, then they'll enter into the negotiation for a revenue-sharing license agreement.
Okay, and in the event that we approve this as a body this evening, when does it become law, and when does the actual application process open?
So if it's approved by four, or at least four votes today, it will become law 30 days after tonight's vote.
Okay, so they could present as early as the 24th of November, or 23rd of November, I guess? Yes, ma'am. I see the city manager has a comment as well, or--
Actually, I'm going to defer back to Joe about the timing of when we'd be ready to start accepting applications.
We'll have to prepare the application, but we'll get it done whenever the ordinance is effective. We'll make sure that we have application ready.
So you should be ready by the end of November, per se. Okay, sounds good. Again, I appreciate the teamwork on this. I know it takes a lot of brains, a lot more brains than we have. We put ideas out there, and you guys need to put all the municipal codes. So we're actually adding, is it seven municipal code changes? There's six when we'll send in here. But I really appreciate the work that staff has done on that. With that said, I would move that we close the public hearing, accept staff's recommendation, and move forward.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah, thank you so much for putting this together. Just a question about the location. So are, are we only looking at events at Bringle Terrace Park?
Yes.
Okay. Can you remind me as to why?
So private property owners are allowed to have events on private property with temporary cannabis events based on the code update that we did several months ago. But in terms of having it at Bringle Terrace Park, that was direction from the council, and there's no other facility in town of that size that we thought would be suitable for a festival and/or a temporary cannabis consumption event like that.
Mm-hmm. So does this, would this then preclude any kind of event to happen on any public land that the city may own in the downtown area?
Yes.
Um, I, I don't like that.
I understand. I think the existing ordinances, in effect, precluded on public--
So we only looked at parkland. Based on the direction that we got from council, Bringle Terrace was the only park that we felt could accommodate this kind of event. If you wanted to look at allowing it in the downtown, it wouldn't be on parkland, it would be in our right-of-way, and it would be under the normal special event permit process. But we would have to make some adjustments to what we've done tonight if we want to allow it in downtown. But if that's the council's direction, we can come back to you on it.
Yeah, so the reason that I bring this up is I feel like we have different areas throughout the city that could really benefit from this type of economic activity. And I wouldn't want to deny the opportunity for different parts of the city to have these types of events, understanding that there's sensitivities depending on how close a school or something, you know, a business that conducts a lot of business with youth, right? We absolutely want to be sensitive to that. What I would want to see is that we adopt this, because it's ready to go, but, I mean, are we able to bring back in the next council meeting something that could refer to a larger scope than just Bringle Terrace Park?
We can definitely bring it back. I don't think we can do it by the next meeting, but I can talk to staff and find out what timing will be to make those adjustments, and we'll bring it back.
Okay, yeah, I would really appreciate that. I, I feel like the intention of the council, as I remember the conversation, was it to be much more broad than just the singular location of Bringle Terrace Park. So I would, I would love for staff to take a look at other property that the city might own that is public right-of-way, parking lot, whatever the case might be. So, okay. With that, I'll go ahead and I'll second your, your motion, Councilmember Green.
Councilmember Green.
Just one more thing. I want to make sure, too, as Councilmember Contreras said, I wanted to do public property events, and I think that's a good, you know, segue into the next meeting when you guys actually discuss this, is any public property that we can put this policy in place, there are businesses in the area that I think might say, hey, let's all get together and shut down the street and, you know, have some type of event or something. So a public policy addition would definitely be something that I support. So thank you so much for putting this together. Thank you for throwing that out there. I'm excited to see what we're going to be doing here in Vista.
Deputy Mayor Melendez.
Thank you. I'm happy to approve this item, and I just want to put my third on the record that I support looking at public property events. Thanks.
I would just add that I'm, I would consider any application, but I think that that should come back to the council. I think that's how we'd have to do it. So I see nodding heads, so we're open to the application, but we'd want to review it again. Okay, seeing no other comment on this item, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. Really? Oh. And I, I heard we have a birthday, Mr. Vaca. It turns the big 5-0 today. Happy birthday. All right. Mr. Vaca, happy birthday. You're dismissed. Go home to your wife. Okay. Oh, maybe after the first item, Mr. Vaca, after the first discussion item. Let's see. Okay, our first item tonight is the reconsideration of the Downtown Street Closures and Public Space Committee. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, then may indicate so by using the raise your hand feature, by pressing star nine, or submitting a request to speak card. Speakers will be called upon after the presentation, and I ask for this item to be on the agenda, so I'll explain why. We had two members of the council that were absent from our last meeting, and we approved this item. I'm actually fully in favor of the committee in creating it. I don't think we got a lot into who the members were going to be, how we were going to choose them. I have had a couple people reach out to me. I didn't ask them, but they reached out to me, said they'd like to be considered. I forwarded them over to our city clerk. My only concern was that we've allocated six figures, more than $100,000 of public money, or maybe it's only $80,000, but still a significant amount of public money, to engineer something that we don't really have even a sketch of yet. And all I'm asking is, let's form the committee, let's sketch the thing out conceptually, and then, once we have a sketch that the business owners on Main Street and all the streets that we're going to impact, once they've been asked their opinion of the, the conceptual sketch, then we can appropriate the funds. But I, before we go engineering the thing, I'd just like to see what it is, and I'd like to know that all of our business owners on, in our downtown that are going to be affected have been consulted. That's all I'm asking for. So I am offering, at this time, a motion to reconsider that vote, and would be looking for a second for that. And, and then would be basically just looking for a consensus, the council not to spend the money until we have a sketch in hand that we want to move forward with after receiving comments. So we have a couple of public speakers on this item. We'll start with Julie Lowen, and then we'll talk to Rachel Bell next, or hear from Rachel Bell next.
Hello, City Council and everybody in the audience. The sketch exists. Back in 2018, I bought the First National Bank building, super excited about what I had done, and they were going to do a plaza renovation, and you had $600,000, $650,000 that was allotted to renovating the plaza. John had worked really hard, and I didn't like any of the sketches. And being the outspoken woman that I am, I said so, and he said, well, fine, then design it yourself. And so I did. And I presented it to the council. They did not appreciate it one bit. And summarily, it just went away. I wasn't allowed to present it that night. If I had a BB gun, I would have probably shot the moon, because I was so mad with my, with my temper. And here we are today. I still own the First National Bank building. I have done nothing with it, except for clean it up inside and try to make it nice, because ultimately, I can't. The First National Bank building is going to require a partnership. And that's going to be a partnership with the City of Vista, with the First National Bank building, with the Beljean Beaver property, with the public spaces, with the private spaces. Clay has property down there. We've got lots of businesses down there, and it's going to require teamwork. But in that area, you've put together committee after committee after committee, and the same people, and the same committees, and the same results, and it just goes around in circles. And so I'm telling you this, you have two choices. Do it differently, or just don't do it. You really do need to do something differently. You can't do the same thing again and again and again and expect a different result. And ultimately, what you have to do, I agree with the mayor, that you've got to start with vision. But it doesn't mean that you can start without money. And starting with $80,000, I'm sorry, that just isn't enough to do much in that downtown area. What you have to do is you have to say, well, gosh darn, if we're asking Julie Lowen to redo the First National Bank building, and her contribution is going to be $10 million to downtown, yes, that's what it's going to be, and we're going to end up with this really cool restaurant, and these private spaces for meeting and for working and, and for having all sorts of really cool things in downtown Vista, and we're going to activate the oppor, the opportunity zone, then what is the City of Vista going to do? What are we going to do, and how are we going to come together to say, hey, we can do something downtown? At minimum, you need to put the $650,000 that you saved years ago back in the bucket, put the $80,000 in the bucket, and then ask the committee to start out with vision. Because a vision for downtown is what needs to happen. There needs to be the conversation that we had. John did a great job leading that. It's just that the results were so finite to that one little piece of property. Maybe we start with defining, what is the area we seek to address? It's the historical downtown Vista. Where, where does that lie? Dave and I, we did an aerial topography of the entire area. We have that. We're willing to donate that to the, to the project.
Where are the [inaudible]? So basically, that's what I'm asking the city to do.
Thank you.
Think about it. Ask you something.
Thank you. Rachel Bell is our next speaker, and then we'll go to Armon King on Zoom.
Hi, good evening, mayor, members of the city council. My name is Rachel Bell, and I'm with the Vista Chamber of Commerce. I wasn't able to attend the meeting two weeks ago. It was my daughter's birthday. So I'm here tonight just to say that I'm in support of us putting together a committee. The chamber is identified on the list that was included in the packet, as, including one representative from the chamber. We're happy to participate in whatever way that means. We have a great relationship with the businesses in the downtown and stakeholders, and I think that we would be great players. So just wanted to just offer support for the formation of the committee. And I do know that there has been work that's been done before. I think it's important to recognize the work that's done before, but also to bring, we have new, new voices at the table and new vision at the table, and to discuss all of those things and bring it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go on Zoom to Armon King.
Hello. I know I'm speaking out of term, and I just want to ask for permission. I don't know if you're aware, that last agenda item that was just spoke on, the Zoom went out right when it started. Nobody from the public that was not present got to hear that or make comment. So will there be another opportunity today, other than writing in that we can make public comment on the last agenda item? Or is there something coming in the near future? Because I see discussion item two or D2 that seems around cannabis as well. Can we speak then?
You've got--
Because we were left out of the last conversation.
You've got two and a half minutes remaining, and there are yours to use as you'd like.
Okay, well, perfect. Well, hello, my name is Armon King, and I am reaching out as a representative of families and social equity advocates in Vista, California. I'm here to emphasize the critical importance of ensuring that no cannabis-related measures are presented, voted on, or enacted until a true cannabis social equity program is established in our community. While I acknowledge that we are in the early stages of this process, I am increasingly concerned that the current program is merely symbolic and lacks genuine social equity. As of now, it appears that there are no actual licenses being offered in the proposed program, and no clear pathway for retail operations, which is a major area where equity can be measured. The intention behind the state-funded cannabis social equity program is to promote diversity, equity, and most importantly, create business opportunities for individuals and communities that were disproportionately impacted by the failed war on drugs. Offering just a single license, maybe in the manufacturing space, does not meet this goal and fails to reflect the true spirit and intention behind the funding. I would like to make it clear that the City of Vista must ensure that equity and inclusion are not just buzzwords, but realities in the program. If there is no intention to create a real licensing opportunity for social equity-qualified applicants, then the state fund should either be returned, or the program should be renamed to reflect its true nature. There are individuals like myself and organizations in our immediate area who are highly qualified to create and implement these programs correctly, and we are more, we are more than willing to work alongside the city to make this happen. We should look to avoid the mishaps of other municipalities and strive to build one of the best cannabis social equity programs in existence. Councilmember Green, I have reached out to you with the hope of setting up a meeting to discuss this matter further, and I trust that this can happen sooner rather than later. Thank you for your time and attention to this very important issue. I strongly urge that no cannabis-related matters move forward until a true social equity program is established in the City of Vista. That has been a mishap in many municipalities. Let's not repeat their failures. Thank you.
Terry Best on Zoom. Terry Best.
Hi, good evening. I'm sorry, I, I was also left off. So I just wanted to say that I'm a longtime advocate of medical cannabis. I'm currently the vice chair of San Diego Americans for Safe Access, and I'd like to echo what Armon said about the importance of cannabis social equity. I look forward to seeing a robust social equity program in the City of Vista, and thank you for your time, and thank you so much for letting us put in on this agenda item.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll close the opportunity for public comment on this item, and I want to thank everybody who spoke on it. And I think Ms. Lowen made the point that I'm trying to make, which is, she did bring a sketch. What we don't know is, is that the sketch, or is there going to be a new sketch? And I just don't want to hire somebody to build my IKEA furniture without having seen first the sketch of what it's supposed to look like, and then we put it together and it, you know, looks like a bookshelf, but it was supposed to be a desk. We have no idea what this is, because we're going to have a new committee, new people, and I just don't think that you hire engineers to engineer things and spend $100,000 of public money before everybody's agreed, and we see like a conceptual sketch of it, and everybody goes, yeah, I think I'd like a bookshelf, that'd be good. We haven't done that part yet. We haven't taken a, a sketch to the business owners. I reached out to numerous business owners on Main Street, and I said, have you been consulted? And they said, we don't know what you're talking about. You know, and some of them remember the process from a few years ago, but that needs to be refreshed. So I just don't think we need to spend $100,000 to put some ideas. I know that Kathy Woods also had sketched something out. So different people, I mean, I can get an eight and a half by 11 sheet of paper and draw the streets downtown in which way I think the traffic should go, and I get my ruler, and I can draw the parking spaces in, and that doesn't cost $100,000. And then I could take that drawing, and I could show it to people and go, hey, what do you think about this? And if the majority of people who own businesses, and, and this is what I'm getting at, we have, we have some business owners here, you've invested your, your life's work, you know, into owning a property, and I just think that-- You know, and some of them remember the process from a few years ago, but that needs to be refreshed. So, I just don't think we need to spend $100,000 to put some ideas. I know that Kathy Woods also had sketched something out. So, different people, I mean, I can get an eight and a half by 11 sheet of paper and draw the streets downtown in which way I think the traffic should go. And I get my ruler and I can draw the parking spaces in. And that doesn't cost $100,000. And then I could take that drawing and I could show it to people and go, "Hey, what do you think about this?" And if the majority of people who own businesses, and this is what I'm getting at, we have some business owners here, you've invested your life's work, you know, into owning a property. And I just think that everybody who has invested in a business and a property in the downtown deserves the benefit of being asked, right? "What do you think of this?" And that we would know that the majority of them were in favor of it before we would start hiring engineers to do engineering work. That's all I'm after. So, hopefully, we can find some agreement on that. Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you so much, Mayor, for offering your recommendations on this. I will not be seconding the motion that you have on the floor, but I will go ahead and put a motion to accept staff's recommendation and to nominate and accept me as the member from the City Council to represent the council on this committee. I want to speak to the issue about $105,000 of public funds. You know, I've been on this council since 2018 and I have seen very little urgency to address the downtown. And I think we need to change that. We definitely have an opportunity right now to take a look at some of the sketches that had already been submitted. What we don't have as a data point, which is a critical data point, is how does that impact traffic? And luckily, this committee is going to have just a little bit of public funds where they can say, "Okay, if we were to close down this area, this alleyway, or this part of the street, what does that do to the traffic flow?" What I would hate to do is for government to get in the way of innovation when we have an opportunity here to create a lot less friction and to bring in, fold in, the incredible talent that we have in our own community. And I really don't want to stand in the way of that. This committee wouldn't be superseding the council. They would simply have a little bit of empowerment to look at different recommendations, different strategies to activate the downtown, the historic downtown, which is in the staff recommendation. There is a project scope for the area. And I think, I just, this is a long time coming and we need to make movement on it. Businesses downtown are relying on us and we have failed them. And we have such a beautiful opportunity right now to change that course and to say, "Hey, you know what? We do want to partner with you. We do want to bring in your expertise, hear what you want to do in the downtown and figure out, hey, does it make sense to do this? Can we get a little bit of landscape design, right? Can we get a little bit of information on how many parking spaces we need? Or, you know, do we gain parking spaces? Do we lose them? How does this affect emergency response?" All those types of things. So, it's not, it's not such a large sum of money. And it's not a trivial amount either. But it is a good start for us to begin this conversation. And I know that folks are hungry for it. So, that's my motion. Hopefully, we can move forward with this. And I look forward to working with, in a collaborative fashion, with all the stakeholders, with anybody else who wants to join and provide comments, suggestions, recommendations, or lend your expertise, even if, you know, our committee fills up and you want to still lend your expertise, let's talk about it. And let's figure out how we can do this together collectively. Our businesses deserve that from us.
Councilmember Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for City Manager, am I correct in stating that 70,000 of the 100,000 is used for traffic studies? The other 35K is going to be used for basically elevations and sketches and ideas, correct?
Yep.
Okay. So, I really feel like the mayor and Councilwoman Contreras are saying the exact same thing. And since we have a staff that is brilliant, they have come up with a fantastic recommendation as well. What it looks like to me is that, as a city, we're now going to commit $35,000 to come up with ideas, to come up with sketches, to come up with elevations, to come up with layouts, to come up with plans that people can look at. Before Julie Lowen, as she said herself, had to spend her own money having professional plans done because nobody really cared. And it was probably three, four thousand bucks to put those plans. I remember them. They were big, Julie. And at the time, yeah, they didn't fly. So, I love the idea of a committee. I've looked at the layout of the committee. I think it's great. I love the chambers involved. I love that we're going to have a council member on there. I also love the fact that we're allocating $35,000 for elevations. That should give us seven to eight different, you know, elevations and sketches we can look at. I don't want to do anything that there's no money attached to. So, I can't just say, "Hey, let's find sketches and approve sketches and then spend the rest of the money." Because I want to spend money on the sketches so I know the value of the sketches. And I know that they were sketches that came up from the committee that was formed by this governing body. I really feel like the committee that we've established here is a really good committee that's going to really take hold on this. I know Councilmember Contreras says that she wants to be the representative and I think she'd be a great representative. I'll let you guys make that final decision on your own because I won't actually be here for that. But knowing that $35,000 of this hundred grand is simply for elevations, the ideas. Then, once you come up with the ideas, we're going to spend 70,000 on an engineering study to figure out which idea has the best traffic pattern, the best traffic flow, and the best parking for this particular, you know, program. We'll also make sure that all the business owners within this 35,000 and the 70,000 are notified and say, "Hey, out of all these elevations, what does this do to your property? What does this do to your business if we close the roads down once a month or twice a month?" So, I like putting money behind ideas. I feel like if we don't have our ideas funded, there's really no way to bring them to fruition. So, this is something we haven't done before and I want to look at David and Julie Lowen because they have committed to spending $10 million on a building in downtown. And with people, I got Insane Brewery here, man, with people that are spending their money, their life savings in downtown, we need to step up. We need to spend money. So, $35,000, it's not a lot of money. It's a very, very small percentage of our budget. But this is going to allow us to come up with professional sketches, professional elevations, and then rate the traffic pattern within downtown to make sure that it's what's feasible and practical for our business owners and to ensure that you guys are successful. Because if our downtown isn't thriving and successful, we as a council are failing. So, I love the idea of allocating the funds. I'm going to let one of my other councilmembers second this motion because I won't be here for it to be enacted. But I definitely feel like putting money where our mouth is, is necessary. $105,000 as a whole is a lot of money. But knowing that 35,000 is going to be the first part spent in conjunction with the committee to come up with the ideas that will ultimately come to fruition, I think it's a great plan. I think it's a great project. And I appreciate staff's work and council's work on this. Thank you.
Certainly. I don't have a, I think 35,000 is a lot for the initial sketches, but okay, 35,000. But the 70,000 on top of it to engineer it before we've brought it back to the council and the people have had a chance in this chamber to review what we're then going to, because here's my issue. We create the committee, we've appointed people to do the work, make the recommendations, we've already engineered it, we've allowed people to invest their valuable time, we've invested $100,000 of public money. By the time it finally comes back to this council, we're going to be sort of offending people if we don't go ahead and rubber stamp the recommendation. I'd just like to have the council have an opportunity to see it when it's at the sketch stage before it gets to the, "We're going to invest the next 70,000." Could we at a minimum agree that we're going to see this thing before, the conceptual sketches, before we do the engineering?
I think as a council, that would behoove us, as a council, to say, "Hey, I'd love to look at the sketches before we, but make sure we're allocating the funding now." But I think if staff can commit to say, "Hey, before we spend the extra money on engineering, we'll show the community, we'll show the business owners, and we'll show council the sketches and say, 'Hey, is this worth dumping more money into?'" Do you guys agree to it? I think the more inclusion we have and the more, you know, discussions that we have on it are fine. But I think that we definitely want to allocate the funding as allocated and perhaps relook at it when, you know, I don't think that's, is that a bad thing, City Manager?
No, we would bring the findings of the-
You were going to do that any-
-back to council to discuss it before we take any direction.
Before you spend the $70,000, we would-
$70,000 is the traffic analysis of the downtown area that we have to perform to determine what the impacts are of the different scenarios. But once that's done, we'll bring that back to discuss with council to get direction.
And I think what the mayor is saying is, is there a way to see the scenarios that we're going to be spending the money on? So, if we come up with six sketches and we're going to hire a traffic engineer to say, "Hey, these are the effects of those six sketches on downtown," that maybe council looks at those six sketches and says, "Hey, it's worth it to do the engineering." I mean, it's an extra layer of oversight. I get it, but if-
Yes, we can do that.
-what they're asking. Okay. So, I understand what you're saying, Mayor, and go for this to council. It makes sense, so.
So, if there's one more member of the council that would agree that we can see the conceptual sketches before we do the $70,000 of engineering, then I would be satisfied without a formal reconsideration. All I want is the business community, the people who own the buildings, the people who own the businesses, and the entire public of the City of Vista and the council to have an opportunity to review the conceptual sketches before we move to the traffic study. Because once we spend the $70,000, we're really locking ourselves in. And I just don't want to lock ourselves in to one of those six or to three of the six before we've even had a chance for people to give their public input. This council has spoken extensively in many different issues about public input. All I'm asking is for one additional step in the process so that everybody can be involved in opining on the different sketches. I know that, you know, say for instance, if Mrs. Lowen did not get selected to serve on the committee, I know she would want to have the opportunity to see the sketches and come back and give input on them before we went to the next phase. Deputy Mayor Melendez.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with many of the comments so far. I just wanted to check on a couple of things. Would the motion on the floor preclude us from having initial phase of sketches brought back before us?
No.
So, you have that direction, City Manager?
Yep.
I like to see what's going on. You know, I don't want to be so authoritarian that I am not allowing the committee to do the work, but if the committee is coming up with great ideas, of course, I want to encourage them and their ideas. So, I would love to see what they come up with and then release them to ensure that their engineering, the engineering is sound for them. The motion might have changed since the last time we discussed it. Is this also going to include a member of our sheriff's deputies, anyone from our Community Safety Commission? Is that included?
The direction we got at the last meeting was to include a member of our safety committee. So, that's in there.
Okay. So, with that, as long as that's included as well, I'll second the motion that Councilmember Contreras made.
Okay. Did you, were you in agreement with the concept of the council having the ability and the public having the ability to review it before we go to the traffic engineering station?
Yes, I did say that and I did affirm with the City Manager that the motion that we currently seconded wouldn't preclude us from ensuring that that happens.
Okay. As long as you're agreeing to give that direction that we're going to have that opportunity.
At least three who agree to that, yourself, myself, and Councilmember Green.
That satisfies my concern. So, if we could just, since we now have a second, could we just have staff read back what the, what it is we're voting on so we all know?
Well, I was going to add that I don't think you need to vote on anything. This was a motion for reconsideration. So, at the last meeting, you did make and pass a motion that has everything that you have in there. So, and with a direction to bring back the sketches, you know, I think that's all we need. So, I don't believe legally we need a motion. Because it's identical to the motion passed two weeks ago.
Well, it's identical, except that there's been direction from the council given by a majority of the council that we're going to bring it back at the conceptual stage before we spend the 70,000 on the traffic engineering. So, that is a substantive difference. Councilmember O'Donnell.
Yeah, I do just want to make sure that we're clear on that because I think we're all in agreement to bring those back. So, with, without making any additional motions or any other actions, that is clear to the direction that this council wants to see any revisions or rather reviews?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Perfect. Then, my only comment, it's already been seconded, which I was going to do, so that's perfect. Ms. Lowen, I appreciate your comments very much and I know that you are not unique in your investment into our business community, not just downtown, but throughout our city. I've met a lot of the business owners in my time on this council, especially in the downtown area. And you're talking 10 million and a lot of people don't have that kind of money, but they have invested everything they have in their life savings and millions of dollars or hundreds of thousands of dollars into being able to operate a business in our downtown area. And the more that we can do to support them, I am always going to try and do that. So, while I understand that $105,000 may sound like a lot of money when you talk about the totality of the millions of dollars that have been vested by our business owners in the downtown area, it is a small drop in the bucket to try and make them successful. So, I am all for trying to make sure that we can move this along. But I appreciate what you're saying. I really do. I understand it. And I think that we've tackled that issue by making sure that we can review all of those. So, I'm just glad this was brought forward. I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to support it at the last meeting that I wasn't here for. But those are all my comments and I'm very excited to see this happen.
We've got a motion to second, so get your chance to vote for it tonight. Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah, it sounds to me like as long as the sketches are seen by the council, doesn't mean it needs to come back to council, but as long as they are displayed to the council in some kind of form, then that is the appeasing factor that is different. So, I actually talked about this the last time and I said, "I would love to have it at the AVO where we can show, open up the AVO to people. It's also a part of the downtown. The city owns it as well. It needs to get activated. Let's activate it." I don't need these sketches to come here to this chamber. I think it's more than appropriate to show them, have a public viewing of it in the location that we're talking about, right? Within that historic downtown. Let's do it in the AVO. I'm sure we can open that up and show the sketches there and maybe kind of have a little bit of a party. So, let's make it part of it. Let's make it fun. Let's make it, yeah, let's make it inviting and let's do it on location. So, very similar to what I said last time. Thank you all so much. This has been a fantastic discussion, although I don't think that we needed to have this meeting again, but, you know.
Well, we've got kind of a conflicting direction now because it seemed that four of us were in agreement with what I thought was, we're going to bring it back, review it, have a formal opportunity for public comment on the item so that business owners would be guaranteed their right under the open meeting law to opine on it publicly in a meeting and then we could move forward from there. Do we need to, we, four of us have spoken on it. Do we, what does staff currently understand to be the direction of council at this time? Is it clear?
What I am envisioning, Mayor, is that we will have a kickoff meeting at the AVO. It will be a lot of fun, a big party. We'll get all the vision of the public down and all of the scenarios that we're going to evaluate with our engineer. And then we will bring that to council for discussion before we start the engineering analysis.
Okay. And that'll happen here. Okay. That sounds clear to me. Does anybody else have anything to add to this? Okay. So, this will come back here to the dais in city council chambers before we move forward to engineering. Okay. We have a motion to second. Please cast your votes. That item is approved unanimously. That'll bring us to item D2 regarding the year-end cannabis revenue policy. Any members of the public wish to speak on this item, then we indicate that so by using the raise their hand feature, by pressing star niner submitting a request to speak card. Speakers will be called upon after the presentation. Councilmember Green asked for this item to be on the genus. We'll ask him to introduce it.
Mayor, I'll be happy to take this if you're all right with that. Councilmember Green?
You know what, City Manager? Go ahead and run with this.
All right. So, we adopted a cannabis-
Let's wait for council chambers to clear first, maybe?
No, please. Thank you. I'm going to ask our students to please proceed to the outdoors. Take your conversations outside the building, if you would please. It's a nice night out there.
Sounds good.
Are there people waiting for? Is there something else waiting? Are there people waiting for, is there something else waiting? Okay, all right, very good. Okay, we'll be back to order and now go to our City Manager, John Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. On September 10th, the council discussed a policy for year-end cannabis revenue where 15% of the revenue was to be set aside for scholarship purposes, and that scholarship money was to be split 50/50 between extracurricular scholarships, which we currently offer for recreational programs, and educational scholarships. After the staff went back and looked at the numbers, we determined that the 50/50 split would give a lot more money to educational scholarships and take away a fair amount from our current recreational program. So we're recommending an 80/20 split, 80% for extracurricular, extracurricular activities, excuse me, and 20% for educational scholarships. That would amount to roughly $800,000 to $900,000 for extracurricular activity scholarships that we currently provide and about $200,000 a year in educational scholarships.
Councilmember Green?
Thank you so much. Yeah, after the meeting, once I went over all the numbers with staff and finance and looked at the number of scholarships, I was shocked to find out we gave out over $750,000 in sports, music, art scholarships this year from the city of Vista's cannabis revenue. So it's a really huge thing. I was actually in City Clerk's office this afternoon, and not only do we give out scholarships, it gives me chills just saying, because I couldn't afford this when I was a kid, new baseball gloves, new baseball bats, new backpacks, new sliding pants. I mean, it's amazing what this revenue is doing for our community. And little kids are able to walk into the City Clerk's office, get their backpack with their new baseball glove, their new baseball bat, and go play these sports within the city of Vista. I only got to play sports one year as a kid because we couldn't afford it, and there were no programs like this. So when I looked that we were gonna lose almost $300,000 in these scholarships that people are already relying on, I thought that it was a good thing to switch it. I conversed with Councilmember Contreras, since she brought this forward for allocating funds to education, and we decided that as a city, allocating $200,000 for educational scholarships is a huge statement. And, you know, so is half a million, obviously, but we really wanted to make sure that we continue the work we're already doing and just improve on that with the educational scholarships. So with that, I would like to make a motion to amend our policy to allocate 20% towards educational scholarships and the other 80% of the 15% revenue to the sports, music activities as we previously stated. Thank you.
Very good. I'll second that. Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah, I was gonna second it, but you could go ahead and do that. This is fantastic, and I really appreciate just retooling it to ensure that we're still able to reach a large quantity of youth that want to have extracurricular activities. They just financially do not have the ability to do that. And, you know, when we did initially bring back recently, the recommendation to add a little bit more funding because we ran out, these chambers were jam-packed, and we had families, we had the youth, and some of them are getting to play for the first time. And not just them, but their siblings too. And, you know, it's no surprise to me that we have record-low crime rate here in Vista because this council is taking a holistic approach. The new majority on this council understands that when we invest in our youth, and we do it early, and we invest in our families, and we do it in the way that we have, where we're providing a critical extracurricular activity, that we see huge returns on that investment. I don't even think we'll be able to quantify ever the huge impact that we're having, and we are a model city for other folks. And this is because of the extraordinary amount of cannabis revenue, and it's only appropriate for this city council to ensure that it is helping our families and our youth move forward and achieve anything that they want by removing some of these financial barriers. And it's incredible. And I know that had we done this in the past, right, there've been, there would have been a lot of folks my age that would have had a different life trajectory. So we can't change the past, but we can ensure that our future is one that is inclusive and one where our youth do not have to wait to be great. So thank you so much for bringing this back. Make sure that it gets retooled. And yeah, I'm ready to vote. This is, this is great.
All right, we have a motion to second. Please cast your votes. That item is approved unanimously. Our third item is a discussion of CIP 8362 and 8294 Protected Bike Lanes Project Award of Contract. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this item may indicate so by using the raise their hand feature, by pressing star nine or submitting a request to speak card. Speakers will be called upon after the presentation. Our Capital Projects Manager, Jeanette Bradshaw, will introduce this item. Welcome. Hit that green, that red button there. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor Franklin, City Council. My name is Jeanette Bradshaw. I'm the Capital Projects Manager, and I would like to present to you the Protected Bike Lane Project Contract Award. So a little bit of background, just to remind you guys, on January 24th, 2023, the City Council directed staff to phase in green bike lanes at conflict areas over three years to revisit the bicycle master plan and overlay with safe routes to school and to explore the implementation of protected bike lanes along the city, the city's mayor, major bicycle routes. On March 28th, 2023, the City Council directed staff to move forward with protected bike lanes using delineators and to later revisit the addition of asphalt berms. On June 13th, 2023, the City Council allocated funds for the Protected Bike Lane Project. On September 26th, 2023, the City Council allocated additional funds to include asphalt berms. On February 27th of 2024, the City Council approved adding Olive Avenue and approved an updated list of streets based on staff recommendations. This is the updated list of streets for the Protected Bike Lanes. North Melrose Drive from Olive to North Avenue, South Melrose Drive from Madigual Drive to the southern city limits, North Santa Fe Avenue from Bobier Drive to Vista Village Drive, Vista Village Drive from Civic Center Drive to West Vista Way, East Vista Way from Civic Center Drive to Taylor Street, Bobier Drive from North Santa Fe Avenue to East Vista Way, Sycamore Avenue from South Melrose Drive to Green Oak Road, and Taylor Street from North Santa Fe Avenue to Crest Haven Drive, and Olive Avenue was added from Vista Village Drive to Emerald Drive. And then the green bike lanes were implemented. That first section are the green bike lanes that have been completed for the conflict areas. I'm sure you guys have seen them as you've been driving around. Do we all have? North Melrose Drive, North Santa Fe Avenue, Vista Village Drive, South Melrose Drive, and East Vista Way. And then the remaining streets for that conflict area green bike lanes that have not been completed are Lupine Hills Drive, Live Oak Road, Shadow Ridge Drive, Sycamore Avenue, Business Park Drive, South Santa Fe Avenue, Civic Center Drive, West Vista Way, and West Bobier Drive. Alternates in change orders. So subsequently, council requested that staff consider Protected Bike Lanes on Longhorn Drive also, which staff found to be appropriate for Protected Bike Lanes. Since these requests from council all occurred at different dates and without sufficient budget at that time of the design, the project documents were developed with flexibility in case the project was not fully funded at the time of contract award. So that's why we, staff requested alternate bids for the Protected Bike Lanes on Olive Avenue, which was bid alternate one. Remaining green bike lanes, so that list of the remaining lanes throughout the city was bid alternate two, and Protected Bike Lanes on Longhorn Drive was change order number one. So staff solicited bids for construction of the Protected Bike Lanes Project. Bids were received on August 27th, 2024. WGJ Enterprises, Inc., doing business as PCI, was the lowest bidder. Their bid amounts are as follows. So the base bid, which was that original list of Protected Bike Lanes, was $2,202,614.08. The bid alternate one, which is the Olive Avenue Protected Bike Lanes, was $307,933. Bid alternate two for the green bike lanes, that's the second phase of all those remaining streets that I listed, that's $494,401. And then change order number one of Longhorn Drive Protected Bike Lanes was $129,360.60. So the total construction cost is $3,127,168.68. And then the available project budget is approximately $2.15 million, and additional funding of $1.58 million is needed to fully fund this project, and is available from the traffic impact fee account. So we already found a funding for it. And then the typical Protected Bike Lane striping, here's a typical section. This is Olive and Benita Drive, showing the green, you know, bike lane breaks for the driveways and upcoming, coming up to intersections, and then the white area, that's the, the buffers. So these are options for, or there are different options for placement of trash cans. They can be in the buffer between the berms and the delineators or behind the curbs. For the streets that have residents directly fronting the Protected Bike Lanes, we will send notices to let them know where to place their trash cans. If you guys have any questions.
Okay. We'll now go to public comment on this item. We'll start with Frank Cicero. Good evening.
You know, I live in Olive, I mean, at Melrose for 30 years, on 661 North Melrose. I oppose you guys making it a three-way. When you guys did, you guys created a freeway right in front of my house. There's been a lot of accidents, especially the one that cost over half a million dollars to replace a light pole that the person died. Okay? Then a couple months ago, the traffic control, first, the traffic control came and says that was for the better good, make it a three-way. Then they come back and say, hey, let's put it back to two-way. And we were gonna get our front parking in front of our house, and that way we'll create a buffer for people not to go into your property. I had an accident not even a year ago. The guy ran inside my house, took off. It cost me $10,000 to fix everything. When you guys agreed to put back the street, I was very happy. Now you guys come back and you're gonna do a bike lane. There's no bikes there, man. It's a freeway. Okay? If you guys put a bike lane, it's a waste of money to do a bike lane because nobody travels there. Maybe once in a gray while, you see a whole bunch of riders, but if you put a bike lane, for what? Who's gonna use it? It's just gonna be there. That's what I want to tell you. Okay? That I really would wish that you guys would put Melrose back the way that it was, a two-lane, so we can have a buffer for our house. I cannot even come out of my house safely. Okay? I have to go into Melrose Place and turn around, okay? And even when I want to pull into my driveway, okay, everybody's going so fast that, you know, that I need to pump my brakes almost a block away and let her know that, you know, you know, that I'm not going to my driveway. And if I, if I'm going to my driveway, they're peeping at me. Okay? So the only thing I'd like to say is, put Melrose back the way it was. Thank you.
Now we'll go on Zoom to Alav Valdespino, followed by Jennifer Gill and Elizabeth McMillan. Alav Valdespino.
Hi, good afternoon, or good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor. My name is Alav Valdespino, and I get around town both in a car and on a bicycle. And I come here to voice my support for Protected Bike Lane projects as they're a very important tool in the infrastructure toolkit for sa, as of safety for cyclists. The purpose serves as a reminder to drivers that cyclists can be there, and as a result, this gives cyclists an increased feeling of safety sharing the road with drivers, which is very key for people to choose to go by bike, this feeling of safety. They mainly serve as a visual indicator to drivers, which is really important given the increase in distracted driving that sadly happens on our roads. I often see drivers crossing over those painted solid white bike lanes, and so having these would help. The placement for these facilities are also critical because they're near schools and aid in establishing safe routes to school for our students. Oftentimes, I often see students using the sidewalk because they feel unsafe using a painted-only bike lane. Installing these can encourage parents and their children to also choose to go by bike or scooter rather than adding to the traffic around schools in the mornings and afternoons. And for those children that already go by bike, these Protected Bike Lanes will add a layer of safety to their commute. Thank you.
Jennifer Gill?
Hello, good evening, Vista City Council. My name is Jennifer Gill, and I'm the Program Manager for the Tobacco Program at Vista Community Clinic. In addition to overseeing all of our tobacco-related initiatives, I also oversee our projects that are related to the built environment, looking at how the environment in which a community lives can affect that community's overall health and well-being. I'm excited to see the city of Vista take the important step in improving the safety of pedestrians and cyclists in the city by implementing Protected Bike Lanes. Adding a Protected Bike Lane to a road improves safety for all road users, including drivers, bikers, and walkers. Research from around the country in cities with Protected Bike Lanes shows that adding Protected Bike Lanes reduces all collisions and injuries by 30 to 50%. Cyclists feel safer riding in the road when there's a barrier between them and cars traveling at higher speeds. Pedestrians feel safer being able to travel on the sidewalks when they know that cyclists won't be using them to avoid cars, and drivers feel safer knowing there's a reduced risk of driving too closely to the cyclists. With more cyclists on the road and potentially less cars, this aligns with the city's commitment to addressing the challenges of climate change in the city. Overall, adding Protected Bike Lanes is a win for the city and will improve the health and environment for all who live, work, and play in Vista. Residents will have more connection to city services and businesses and recreational facilities in a safe and equitable, equitable manner that will be better for their health and the health of the environment. These seemingly small changes can, can and will have a long-lasting effect on the health and well-being of the city. If there's any assistance BCC can provide the city as this project gets off the ground, please don't hesitate to get in touch. Thank you.
Now we'll go to Elizabeth McMillan.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name's Elizabeth McMillan, and I live on Olive Avenue. I'm asking the city to consider implementation of Protected Bike Lanes throughout the entirety of Olive Avenue to downtown Vista. As you guys all know, Olive Avenue is a major thoroughway connecting residential neighborhoods of Vista and Oceanside to downtown Vista. It's currently dangerous to bike from my house to downtown, and I'm forced to take my car despite it being less than two miles away. The current bike lanes are not protected in the end halfway down Olive Avenue. At a part of Olive where the road narrows and the sidewalks are not continuous. Olive Avenue in general is a very dangerous street. Despite it being primarily residential, people drive far too fast and often ignore stop signs. There's car accidents in front of my house almost monthly, and it's incredibly dangerous for people on bike. And Protected Bike Lanes would be a wonderful addition to my neighborhood and to Vista overall. My husband and I both love biking, and I would love to be able to bike with my two small children to Vista Village, but right now I just don't feel safe doing so. Addition of bike lanes that connect the major roadways in Vista to downtown, I believe would make Vista a safer, greener place overall and reduce car traffic along Olive. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And that's the end of our public comment on this item, so we'll close the opportunity for public comment. And we'll go to Deputy Mayor Melendez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for all your work on this. I know we've had a lot of adjustments and even some updates in the data related to traffic collisions and cyclists and the corridors that are being included, where they may have been excluded before, are really important. Olive Avenue is an area, if you look at some of the maps that come out from Sandag, very heavy collision area when it comes to cyclists and cars. And that's because it is a residential area, and people are wanting to be able to exit their home and get on their local, local street and ride their bike. And unfortunately, many are not able to do that. Throughout the city, without Protected Bike Lanes, it's not possible for people to get out there and ride their bicycles. It's extremely unsafe. I wouldn't recommend it, but many people have to. And the folks that we do see on the street who are riding their bikes in the little bit of space that they have, a lot of folks are doing it because they have to. And there are even more people who want to ride their bikes, but they can't because it's not safe for them to do so. And it's a healthy activity. It can connect people to all different neighborhoods, and it's world-class infrastructure that our community deserves. No neighborhood in Vista should have to deal with freeway speeds next to their house. It's not okay. Every single neighborhood deserves to have a safe street and high-quality facilities, good sidewalks, bike lanes, space for cars, managed intersections, right? So that there are as few collisions and damages as possible. And in speaking with the families and from hearing from the majority of people, I've found that more people want to be able to get outside and ride their bike and go to downtown and go to the local park, but they can't do that. So I'm really excited about being able to offer this to the community. And there's a couple of reasons why I think it's very, it's really important to include Olive Drive or Olive Avenue. And the main reason is because this will be the corridor that is an east-west connection. All of our other planned protected bike lanes are going north and south. And this east-west connection will bring so much activity. All of the neighborhoods, east and west on Olive, will be able to connect these bike lanes. And like we heard from our neighbor Elizabeth, which I appreciate you calling in, she told me about wanting to be able to have safer street in front of her house and wanting to ride her bike downtown. This is going to be possible for her family now. They can hop on their bikes, take a breezylittle two-mile trek to downtown, stop at Handel's Ice Cream and get a little bit of ice cream, and then ride their bikes back home safely. And more and more families and neighbors are going to be able to do that. I have a vision that every single neighborhood will be able to safely ride their bike downtown. If we have that standard of safety, then we can accomplish zero pedestrian and cyclist fatalities. But we have to invest in the infrastructure. And a bike lane is not only safer for pedestrians and for cyclists, it's also that buffer for cars between the main road where cars are driving and people's homes. And we have seen way too many accidents happen where these open lanes and excess speeds have resulted in cars crashing into people's gardens, cars crashing into other cars in their driveway, going through people's windows, and it's just not okay. So we need to include these additional locations so that all of the neighbors can be included in these safety improvements. My one question is, with the funding that's available, what if there are more streets that would benefit from protected bike lanes? Would that be an additional project that maybe in the next year our council can explore? I'm ready to approve the staff recommendation tonight, but is staff considering that there may be more streets that want protected bike lanes?
Yes, definitely, in the future. So this first phase that we looked at, we kind of went out and found the, pretty much the easy streets where we can do the protected bike lanes, which just re-striping so that we wouldn't need to re-widen, or I'm sorry, widen the roads or anything like that, or maybe, you know, come up with other creative solutions. But we do have planning efforts coming up where we would be looking more specifically at bicycle improvements. We have put in grant applications into two programs for $700,000 to develop an active transportation plan where we want to look more closely at pedestrian and bicycle improvements. So projects that would require kind of more work, we would be looking at those as part of that planning effort, which we, of course, we would bring to council.
So these projects right now would not be too intensive of a redesign? We're not going to have to, like, take up any parts of the sidewalk or purchase any private property?
Yeah, all of these projects that are presented tonight are within the existing curb-to-curb width on the streets. We're just doing with re-striping, in very few cases, removing parking, but generally just kind of keeping the existing street operations, but where we can fit in a buffer and the protection.
So really, we're taking the current streetscape that we have, and we're just enhancing it?
Correct.
Okay. And I'll just make one more comment, and that is that another reason why Olive Avenue is such an important corridor is because of the safe routes to school. We have kids coming to Grapevine Elementary, and not only do the bike lanes allow kids to be able to ride their bikes to school, which the school district is seeing more and more kids wanting to get on their e-bikes, even younger kids, right? Starting to ride their bikes more frequently. But we also need to create more facilities and more of a buffer for those kids that are even walking. So I've worked really hard to create more crossings for kids to get to school, and we're starting to plan out where we can put sidewalks for kids to get to school for safe routes to school. And so as we may consider additional bike lane areas for bike lanes, let's definitely talk about what the prioritization is for those areas, because I'm sure there are more areas that could benefit. And the more intensive the project is, you know, the more the cost will be. And so I want to talk about prioritization for upcoming projects as well. But this is really going to be a facelift for a lot of those areas that are just very dangerous, and people are now going to have the opportunity to actually be able to ride their bicycles. And I'm really looking forward to the improved safety on all of these streets that are included. So I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendation, which it looks like it's in three parts, and moving forward to have a discussion about future bike lane priorities. Thank you.
Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you so much for putting this together. I know that this is a really big project, and it's going to be transformational for our city. So I really appreciate all the hard work that's gone into it, how attentive you've been as we've, as a council, have discussed this. So what's before us, I think, is fantastic. I'll go ahead and second the motion. I do have a question. Some of the speeds in these corridors is extraordinary. When is it that we're bringing back our discussion to implement AB43, reducing speeds?
We are currently in the evaluation process with a consultant, and we have it scheduled. I'm trying to remember. Initially, we were going to bring it back in December, but it is coming in the next couple of months.
Okay. And would the creation of a bicycle facility lend more leeway for us to reduce speeds, potentially by five miles per hour, next to a bicycle facility?
It's not necessarily that, but one of the criteria in the new state legislation is what is called active transportation generators, like land uses that generate pedestrians and bicyclists, which were already considered in our model.
Okay. Okay. Awesome. And then I'll have some other questions offline about that. But yeah, this is, this is great. You know, I rode my bicycle here, and it's not always so easy to maneuver throughout the city. There's, you know, I haven't even had it for that long, and I've already had situations where I'm encountering, you know, folks with car brain. It happens to me, too, because I also drive. I don't just walk, take public transit, and bike. Every once in a while, I do drive. And I know when we get behind the wheel, it's just so easy to just, like, think about yourself and where you need to go and how fast you want to get there. But there are serious consequences for aggressive driving and speeding. And I look forward to, you know, having a much safer, safer route on Melrose, because this is an area that I do bike on. And I always feel like, you know, it's, I'm taking a chance, and I shouldn't, you know, take a chance just to get from one part of the city to the other and back home. So anyways, I really look forward to it because I feel like it doesn't matter how many lights I put on my bike or anything. It's when there's a protected bike lane that is a berm, it just is that much safer. And it's safer for people that are walking, and it's safer for homes that have a frontage on a busy street as well. So thank you again so much. I know that this is a difficult project, but you all navigated it really well. And the CIPs, I know we have a bunch coming, so thank you for helping us manage all these projects.
Councilmember O'Donnell.
Thank you, and staff, thank you so much. I know this is a long, long process that we've been working on, and I really appreciate the hard work that's gone into it. Just real quick, so on page 219 of our packet, there's a couple gaps I see specifically on Lupine Hills, sections 1, 2, and 3, 9, 10, 11. I'm assuming that those gaps are because of street parking that's currently available?
This is on Longhorn Drive, right?
This is Lupine Hills, which wraps around as a big shoehorn, basically, or horseshoe, I should say.
So this is the, oh, the, sorry.
Sorry. So all of the green bike lanes, just the paint, is just painting at the intersections and the conflict areas that were selected. So I think that's why it looks patchy.
So are these going to eventually be protected bike lanes, or are these just green striping?
The protected bike lanes, yeah. So the direction was to look at all the major roads, and that's why we kind of didn't look at these interior roads. And that might be, as Deputy Mayor Melendez, you know, mentioned, that, you know, maybe part of the next phase where we kind of take a deeper look at the citywide bicycle network and see what kind of improvements are most appropriate for what type of streets.
So for Longhorn, is it, is it green paint, or is it actual berms with protected bike lanes?
Yeah, Longhorn was actually that we developed a protected bike lane design for it, and that's what's in that.
I just wanted to make sure, because I was, I was going to give very clear direction to make sure that that was the case. The other question I have is, have we reached out to the city of Oceanside? Because we have a large pocket of South Melrose that actually is not, does not belong to the city of Vista, and there's going to be a clear gap between our, our bike lanes between Oceanside property and city of Vista. Have we talked to them at all?
Not during this design, but we can, we can reach out to them.
Could we please, and I know that, you know, election coming up, councils change, whatever it might be, but if we can speak with them just to see if we can get that gap closed, just to make sure it's consistent throughout South Melrose, I think that'd be a really good thing. I also, I know that we have a traffic light eventually coming at some point to Dawson and South Melrose. However this design goes down for bike lanes, I just want to make sure that we're not spending more money to remove protected bike lanes, so we can put in a traffic light. So when the design does come through, please make sure that they are taking that into consideration, since that is going to be impending, I'm imagining in the next 12 months or so, that we would have that. I already asked about the bike lanes on Lupine Hills, Oceanside. Yeah, I mean, listen, I, again, I appreciate Longhorn. I've talked to a lot of students over at Rancho Buena Vista High School. They've, whether it's in person or via email, they've all shared their concerns about traffic going down those streets, even trying to get to school. I know that we did a complete street crosswalk at Longhorn and Melrose, which they all appreciate. So this is just one more added safety measure for them to get to school. So I'm very grateful that we're able to do this. I want to thank my council for the support on this. And again, just thank you for the hard work. I'm really excited to see this get implemented.
Councilmember Green.
Ms. Janelle Bradshaw, thank you so much for your report. For those of you who don't know, I went to high school with Charles Bradshaw, who's Janelle's lovely husband. He sings like an angel, by the way. If you ever need a song sang, have Mr. Charles Bradshaw go sing a song. Thank you so much for your report. One thing I wanted to ask about was, on Melrose, where we're putting these protected lanes in, is that going to switch that road from a freeway back to two lanes on both sides like it was before?
Yes, between Olive Avenue and North Avenue, we are going back to the four lanes.
Going back to the four lanes as opposed to six lanes. So the gentleman who was, you know, talking about how hard it is for him to get in and out of his driveway, hopefully this will make his life a little bit easier. So that is definitely fantastic. No, I appreciate it. As you guys know, I'm not rerunning for council at the end of this year, and with all of my extra time, I plan on getting an electric bike and riding through all these protected bike lanes. Super excited. So get these all done, council. Really nice. And we also did verify somebody, some engineer figured out that we can fit our trash cans in between the ballards, right? Yeah? No problem with that? Okay. Because trash day cannot be a pain. It's already, it's already hard, you know what I mean? Like, don't make it harder. Okay. Thank you so much. We have a first and a second. We need to vote on this? All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time and appreciate your work. Thank you, too, Sam. You're amazing.
We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. That item is approved unanimously. That'll bring us to item D4 regarding an agreement with the San Diego Rescue Mission for Citywide Homeless Outreach Services. There any members of the public that wish to speak on this item? The means of case so by using the raise your hand feature, by pressing star nine, or submitting a request to speak card. Speakers will be called upon after the presentation. Our homeless services program manager, Jonathan Lung, will introduce this item.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor. City council members. This item recommends an agreement with San Diego Rescue Mission for outreach services and supported the street outreach strategy of the strategic plan to address homelessness. With me tonight is Daniel Sterman, Housing and Homeless Services Management Analyst, who will provide the staff presentation.
So utilizing direction provided by the city of Vista's strategic plan to address homelessness, which was adopted in March 2022, the social worker strategy funds full-time social workers to work with individuals experiencing homelessness within city limits. After providing four years of outreach services with a single provider, staff released a new RFP seeking the continuance of providing street-based case management. On August 12, 2024, a request for proposal to solicit a provider for citywide homeless outreach services was published. The RFP requested proposals to provide street-based case management partnering with other homeless service providers connected to Vista's strategic plan funding, while also working alongside city of Vista cops deputies and various city departments. Street-based case management includes but isn't limited to assisting individuals experiencing homelessness and obtaining permanent housing, making referrals to appropriate programs and services, assisting in becoming document-ready, developing a by-name list and leading citywide case conferencing. The RFP also requested that the proposer operate a referral line for persons experiencing homelessness and concerned citizens, attend regular public and private meetings as determined by the city, and also help identify gaps in homeless services and the assistance needs in Vista. Three proposals were received. Oh, thank you. Three proposals were received. Raiders of the proposals include city staff and a representative from the Regional Task Force on Homelessness. Based on the evaluations of the RFP scores, staff recommends approving an agreement with the San Diego Rescue Mission, and that that agreement will be in effect for 12 months with 12-month extensions up to 36 months. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Paul Armstrong, Vice President of Programs for the San Diego Rescue Mission.
Good evening. Just, so as a great reminder, listening to the previous items, that homelessness is one item that you guys deal with. Thankfully, homelessness is all we deal with. That's our primary focus, our primary concern. And so definitely appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak with you tonight. Do you want to just get a little bit, hey, who are we? And it's going to come up. Yes, we are a faith-based organization. Back in 1954, we had a businessman by the name of Arnold Thiessen and a couple of other businessmen who were called, they were moved by their faith, to start a soup kitchen in downtown San Diego. And that, that's our history. Our history is seeing faith called to action. I had the opportunity to work for Salvation Army. I love the story of William Booth, who wanted to raise up an army, Salvation Army, to declare war on poverty and really offer people hope and give them dignity. I love the stories around Father Joe Carroll. That's also a local legend here. And so, yes, that is. That's our passion. It's a part of our calling. I loved, I just was reading a story, and the way they put it, is one man was talking to a friend, and he said, hey, I really want to talk to God and ask Him why He allows poverty and homelessness. And his friend said, well, why don't you ask God? Because I'm afraid God will ask me the same question. So we do see that it's our call. It's our responsibility as a community to really serve and address these issues. And so that's our heart, that's our passion, that's our calling. But now it's my time to show you that we're also really fierce professionals, and we actually know what we're doing. We have a process and a system. You see that up there. We engage, we have a system and approach that we utilize that dovetails well within the larger system of care. We do strategic outreach, and we do provide low-barrier shelter at our lighthouses, and we currently do that in both Oceanside and National City. We do have a holistic faith-based program that's Mission Academy. Just want to highlight and stress, both in outreach and at our low-barrier and at our low-barrier shelters, there's zero faith requirements. This is about meeting people where they're at, addressing their needs, and helping them take a step forward. We do have a portion of our program that will always stay privately funded, and that's Mission Academy. And that is where people say, hey, I do want a faith-based program. It's a holistic approach. Love to invite you to our graduation on November 2. We celebrate graduations twice a year, and then we have an incredible aftercare program for the alumni from that. But what we really want to focus on is outreach and what we've done in the area that is open to the public. Again, I want to, I want to stress who you're, you're hopefully going to select to be your provider. First of all, we are a member of the continuum of care. We're fully integrated into the larger system. We've had the opportunity to host what's been known as the Mayor Symposium. Just this last summer, we had 16 of the 18 mayors there. We really are trying to create regional solutions and a regional approach. I will tell you our outcomes. I really appreciate the San Diego Housing Commission. They share their data, and the outcomes from our lighthouses are matching. We're going toe-to-toe with the San Diego Housing Commission. So we actually do know what we're doing in low-barrier shelter. I'd love to show you guys our South County Lighthouse. We've really created a regional hub. Where creating collaboration is at the heart of what we do. Would highlight that our Oceanside Navigation Center had the opportunity of being selected by Assembly Member Davis as the Not-for-Profit of the Year. We were actually a key contributor to the DA, has a shelter app that she's working. I can't take credit for this. I'm going to introduce you guys to Carla, who's our outreach director. But because of our work, because of Carla's efforts and another staff member who both have lived experience, when the DA did her press conference, guess which service provider got to go with the DA to announce her shelter app? It was the San Diego Rescue Mission. And it wasn't because I'm just that good-looking. It's because Carla is an incredible professional, and she wowed the DA by her understanding of both outreach and how to integrate outreach into a shelter system. We have a really great partnership with 211. We've actually just received, our 211 has received funding from the TA Marketplace so we can incorporate CalAim billing into our processes and systems. And so I'm just telling you, we, we actually, this is our field. We understand homelessness. We know what we're doing, and we're here to serve your city. What do we do in outreach? Well, back in 2021, we actually got a contract with Little Italy Association where we did street case management. Again, the community standards, and we'll get into this when we get into the plan, we're all in on RTFH's community standards. Why? Because they're relational, and that's the heart of what we do. We believe in connecting with people, and so we follow that. After, so once we got the, the contract with Little Italy Association, I'm going to tell you, they love us. We invite you to give them a call and ask them about what they've seen from us. They've, they've appreciated, and they've renewed our contract year after year because they, they are seeing a difference in the streets of Little Italy. We started a shower trailer ministry in 2022, and we were able to expand with a second shower trailer in 2023. Also, in the summer of 2023, Oceanside Main Street Association, we received some funding from the City of Oceanside to operate outreach in that area. When we shifted over to the Navigation Center, they had stopped funding that, so we needed to pull back. Can I tell you that Oceanside Main Street Association noticed? We have now re-signed a contract with the City of Oceanside to bring outreach workers back into Oceanside Main Street Association. The reason? They were seeing a difference in the quality of the work that we're doing. Again, I already mentioned that we've done a lot of collaborative work in South County. Back before we opened our South County Lighthouse, what we did was we intentionally went out with all of the coordinated outreach efforts that were happening in South County, knowing that we were bringing a shelter online. And as a consequence, we really created a sense of community and relationship with all the cities down there. Right now, our South County Lighthouse receives referrals directly from National City, from Chula Vista, from Imperial Beach, San Ysidro. And so why is that happening? Because we were able to build relationships with the other outreach providers in the South Bay area as we did that. We're continuing our efforts in outreach with engaging our larger community. This year, we're also focusing on what's known as HubSpots. That's where we take our shower trailer and partner with one of our church partners so that volunteers, community members can get, not just get involved with outreach, but actually have a path to get connected to the larger system. Those HubSpots are an opportunity for people to actually then engage with professional outreach workers so we can help them resolve their homelessness. Want to talk a little bit about the team that you are bringing on. So first of all, I did get my, very fortunate, thanks to the GI Bill, I am a Navy veteran. I was able to go to USC, so a respected school in the area of social work. I was able to earn that in 2017. As mentioned, I'm a retired naval officer, and I just want to highlight that because some of the concerns that we are, we want to just get in front of. So I served as a chaplain the second half of my career. That did mean I served with Marines. I got the opportunity to deploy to Afghanistan, where I was able to, unfortunately, I had to do memorial services. When I did my memorial services, I was not preaching a sermon. I was honoring fallen Marines, and I was serving every single sailor and Marine, regardless of their faith, regardless of their belief, regardless of who they were. I was serving them. When I served on the USS New Orleans, I was a chaplain there, and when we were forward deployed, we would get what was known as Red Cross messages. And typically, since we were on the other side of the world, they came about 2:00 in the morning. So I get a knock at 2:00 in the morning, hey, chaps, we got a Red Cross message. And that meant I would sit down with a sailor. Most times, those Red Cross messages were a death of a family member. I wasn't preaching the gospel. I was talking to a sailor who'd just lost someone, and I served them regardless of who they were, what their background was. So baked into my DNA is that, yes, I'm a person of faith, but I also know how to operate in the public sector. One of the things I loved about being in the Navy is I didn't care who the president was. I've served for Republican presidents. I've served for Democratic presidents. I cared about one thing, supporting and defending the Constitution. What I'm going to commit to you, if you select us, if you go ahead and approve this contract, I don't care if you guys are Republican or Democrat. You're hiring us for one reason, because we're going to do effective outreach for your city. We're going to help you guys change the state of homelessness. That's why you're hiring me. I'm not the best part of this deal, though. Carla Venegas is the best part of this deal. She's my Director of Outreach, and as I mentioned, she has lived experience. She actually came through our program. Just so you know, Ian De Jong was the, the contract consultant who helped RTFH develop their community standards. He went to Little Italy. What he saw impressed him, that he brought Carla with him to present at the National Alliance to End Homelessness. She was a part of his panel discussion, talking about relational community, street outreach. So she is a fierce professional who knows what she's doing. She's an active member of all the collaborative outreach efforts that happen, both in the City of San Diego and in South Bay. She is excited to get up here. She's chomping at the bit to get up here so she can do the same level of networking that she's known for in the City of San Diego, that she's known for in South Bay. She's the real hero here. And if you guys, man, fire us and just hire her, and I guarantee you, you're going to change the state of homelessness in your city, because she's tenacious, and she knows what she's doing. She's a recognized expert. My unofficial title at the San Diego Rescue Mission is nerd. And I just offer this, I'm giving you guys something. As you consider to continue to look at homelessness, what we know is homelessness is complex. I did do some study on complexity theory and complex systems, and this is just a simple tool that I'm going to encourage you guys, and you can hold us accountable, evaluate us against this, evaluate anything you're doing. These are just four things you need to be thinking about as you continue to develop your homelessness plan. One is diversity. And you see that they're dialed. So if you ever think of like a sound system or soundboard, you got to adjust it to address the complexity that you're seeing. We do recommend you constantly asking, do we have the right people at the table? I'm sure you've been to meetings where you've had too many people, and it's been unproductive, and I know you've been at plenty of meetings where you haven't had the right people at the table, and you've gone, man, we need so-and-so at the table. So we're a firm believer, and let's make sure we have the right people at the table. Then the second part is connectedness. Do we trust each other? One of the things I will also tell you is, and I'm not just doing this to kiss up to the city staff, you have an incredible staff. I believe we are building trust. They're very professional. They ask great questions. They are laser-focused on meeting your guys' needs and what your city needs in addressing homelessness. I do believe we're building a connection, and I do believe we'd be effectively able to work with each other. Then we do. I think one of the things we have to be constantly doing is asking ourselves the process and systems. My little soapbox is in San Diego County. We tend too much to rely on relationships, and we don't take enough work on making sure that our systems and processes are effective. And then finally, we're all about data. We want you guys to hold us accountable. That's that adaptability. How are we adjusting what we do based on what we learned, and how are we measuring success? We want to be held accountable. We're inviting you guys. We'll show you what we're going to measure, but we want that our focus is going to be on, that we're going to respond in a complex manner to a complex problem, using this system to make sure that you guys are, have confidence that we're addressing the issues that you need. So what is the plan? Very simple. RTFH community standards. We are going to utilize RTFH's community standards, which is street-based case management. We are recommending, and we are going to work with the city on having a by-name list. That means we're focusing on quality, not just quantity. We need to know who people are so that we can be addressing and, and making sure that we're getting them the right resources. Huge fan of care coordination, and, and we understand the importance of collaboration. One of the exercises we did when we did, opened our South County Lighthouse, is we did a little passport with all the different services, and it was a full page of different things that people need. And we had about 30 different service providers come and have lunch with us, and we asked them to stamp the passport on what service they could provide. At the end of passing that passport around, guess what? We had a fully stamped passport. We understand collaboration. We know how to work with people, and we're going to do that in the City of Vista. And we do recognize, we got some feedback, that one of the concerns is that, hey, are we going to be accessible? I love the fact that we are known for answering our phones. We're always known for, regardless of where we are, and we're going to make that commitment to you guys, that we will be available for the community. The fun stuff, what databases do we use? Yes, we use HMIS. We also have a system that's called Mission Tracker that actually pushes our data into HMIS. We are collaborating, again, we're working with CI, 211 and CIE. They actually have a single-user login with them. And then we also have a software data platform called Eponyx, which helps us actually track where we have our encounters. So one of the things we'd be able to do for you guys with the Eponyx app is geo-fence the City of Vista. So when you're asked where were your guys' outreach workers, we can actually show you on the Eponyx app where they were located and what services they were engaged in. But that's not all. We are working with the city to make sure we have clear after-hour procedures, and obviously we're going to actively participate. One of the things that's huge, and I was, I did not know that RTFH was sitting on reviewing this, I'm sure, I'm hoping they've talked to you guys about diversion. We are trained by RTFH in diversion, and all diversion is, is how do we actually access some, some other types of resources so we can divert someone from having to get fully integrated into the homeless service system? We know that we, you know, we haven't hired anyone yet, because we kind of got to have an approved contract, but we are actively interviewing right now so that we can go as quick as possible. The city, your city staff has expressed to us that sense of urgency, so we've been having interviews as we speak. We're going to be actively hiring. We'll be training them November, December. As I mentioned, Carla, though, she's going to want to start engaging with the fellow providers, other folks in the area, as soon as we have a signed contract, so that we can be getting and building those relationships. And so we'll be looking to be active as soon as possible, but can guarantee a fully functional by the end of December, just to make sure that we have the time to properly onboard, train our staff, and make sure they're fully ready to go. Talk a little bit about staffing, so what our proposal provided for. Of course, you're getting the leadership team. That's just a part of, of who we are, but the specific budgeted staff in the part of this contract is an exempt program manager, who's going to be the person that we're going to hold primarily accountable. We will have a coordinator, and this is that person who's primarily making sure that we're networking, that we're working with other providers, that we're building those relationships. And then, of course, we'll have an outreach lead and outreach worker that's out there doing the, the street case management. The coordinator will also be doing street case management, and I promise you, if you try and keep Carla in an office, good luck. That program manager is going to be expected to be on the street as well. We get it. This is an all-hands-on-deck effort, and we're going to be out there building relationships, making sure things happen. Do you just want to highlight that we're, that's not all. In addition, we do have supporting staff. We do have a social services team that includes both behavioral health specialists, as well as we've gotten to do a lot of great work in our, with our Children's Resource Center about getting families reconnected to education. We actually have great working relationships with San Diego Unified School District. We're working with Oceanside right now as well to make sure every family we engage with, that we're connecting those children back into school so that they can get, they can get access to some of the resources that are available through the school system. And of course, part of that does mean, we do have local relationships with universities. We have interns, so we'll be able to augment the team from time to time with interns who are also working towards their masters in social work. Training, let's hit on that, because I know that's going to be a concern. So we have some internal training, but just want to highlight our external training. Again, we leverage other folks and, and being able to make sure that we're fully trained and equipped. You can see the list. Just because I know it's going to come up as an issue, yes, we actually do have a relationship with the San Diego LGBT Community Center to provide training with respect to the SAMSA development competencies and working with the LGBTQ plus, QAI plus community. So we actually, and our next training is scheduled in November in the anticipation of this team coming on, so that team will receive that training. But that is not the only training we receive. I also would like to highlight, we leverage the National Alliance to End Homelessness. They have a great training seminars, which includes, we have our folks take training on cultural humility. So to double down on the point, we actually really do understand how to serve in a larger sector and a larger area, and we train our team to be professional in all situations. Budget, one of the cool things for us is, just so you know, we've already put some safeguards. We are now starting to take government contracts, but we don't want that to be more than 20% of our overall budget. We want to, we want to stay lean and mean, and we're okay with saving you guys some money. So if we come in under budget, we're okay with that. We're going to use our dollars wisely. We're going to use them effectively. The budget we did provide did have us a little bit under budget based on the calculations that we were doing. And please also recognize, this does not include our in-kind donations. And last year, we had about $2 million in in-kind donation across the organization, so we're able to offset those costs. Again, we're looking at some, some other things that would be able to, to be effective. In fact, one of the things to make sure I highlight, so one of the things too with that, we are, again, I mentioned, we're actively looking at how we can do the CalAim billing. And one of the things we built in, and, and we built in with our proposal as well, if we're able to do CalAim billing, so that's the Medi-Cal resources, then that's going to be offset. We're not going to charge you guys for that, because we can only charge one funding source. And we do believe that that's a model that we really need to be exploring across homeless services, is how do we leverage an incredible funding source that can provide a level of sustainability where we're not just reliant upon city contracts. So I just want to highlight that. I think I overpassed that when we were talking about our plan, just because I do want to be respectful of time. Reporting, so here is our reporting, but here's one of the exciting things. So the top list is all the things we've already talked with city staff about what we would provide you guys. This is one of the things I'm excited. Again, I think you have a professional staff here. Those long-term system evaluations, again, I was in a, in a meeting with, with Ian De Jong, and when he shared these three stats, I'm like, dang it, that's good. I would love to do that. We would love to work with your city to really go, hey, if we could have those numbers, those bottom three numbers, average length of homelessness, how many housed and how many stayed housed. And the reason that's important is because when we think of chronic homelessness, if we're doing it right, if we have an effective by-name list, if we're doing effective street case management, what's happening is the most chronic higher utilizers of services are getting off the street. As they get off the street, guess what happens to your average length of homelessness? It goes down. It'd be a very tangible way for us to come to you guys. So that's a long-term plan. The top numbers we're giving you, the long-term plan, we've already been talking with you, if you guys select us to be your provider. Super excited to work with your professional team and our professional team to see if we really can't be figuring out even better metrics so that we can have an outcome-driven system. And really, we, we want to influence the larger system. We want to have an impact on the state of homelessness. End with, what's our goal? Frankly, we want to work ourselves out of a job. And yes, you can look at our proposal, and you will see we had a decommissioning plan put into our proposal. We want to legitimately figure out, how do we work ourselves out of a job? We want you guys to notice an impact. I like how Donnie has put it, our CEO, we want to pass that eyeball test. We want the average member, city, city member to go, man, something's different. We want the community to be thankful. We also want you to believe this was one of the best decisions you ever made. But ultimately, really, we're here to help change the state of homelessness in Vista. That's our goal. That's our hope, and we'd love to partner with you guys to accomplish that. So with that, that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Paul. That concludes staff's presentation. We're available for questions.
That concludes staff's presentation, we're available for questions. Very good, we still have no request for public comment? Okay, then we'll go now to Councilmember Green.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your presentation, I really appreciate it. I love that you are fierce professionals, I think that's a big deal. One of my concerns with the faith-based organization thing had just had to do with the whole, you know, we want to have a separation of church and state per se. So I want to make sure that there is no requirement, which I think you made that really clear, that there are no, there are zero faith-based requirements in order to enter your program. However, there is an option for the Mission Academy per se in your program. One of the questions that I had is you speak about, you know, your outside funding, I forget what you said, your in-kind donations. In the event, you know, you receive a certain amount of in-kind donations, does that ever change the way that your intake works with clients? And what I mean by that is if you start getting a bunch of money and you, you know, give us back some money, which it sounds great, but would you then be forcing any type of people to go on any certain program or anything?
No, no, so thank you, thank you for letting me clarify. Yeah, like when we talk about in-kind donations, we're talking about hygiene products, clothing, we're talking about things-
You've got private donors too, I apologize. So like you say, 20% of your money is from city contracts, so the other 80% is really what I'm worried about because-
Yeah, no, great.
Only 20%, how can 20%, how can the tail wag the dog, my man? So how can we tell you what to do?
When I say 20%, understand our budget is $20 million. So that gives me $4 million, this contract is a $500,000 contract, so we're well under our 20%. So this is going to be a contract between us and the City of Vista to provide those services. What we will tell you is that by staying a little bit more nimble, one of the things that we love about our organization is we have a growth mindset. We want to be pushing the system to get better. And so that's, when we talk about that, that's really about our ability to stay nimble and really have kind of an entrepreneurial mindset. We want to be outcome-driven. Again, that's why I highlighted those additional metrics. One of the things I appreciate about your guys' city staff and like, okay, this is a team we can work with to really be innovative and creative and be within those confines of the structure. So, so yeah, that's more about our larger philosophy that you're going to hear us say we're an outcomes-driven organization and we want to stay that way.
Well, and that's what we're all about too, is our outcomes and our matrices. Are we putting money into something that's actually successful, that has great results, where people aren't constantly falling back into a pattern? And I think that's something that your organization, it sounds like you've been able to deliver and that's really what we're looking forward to. A question for Daniel Sterman and Jonathan Lung, and thank you guys again for all of your work. I think that he wrote down, we have an incredible staff, so. Great job, incredible staff, working with fierce professionals, we should be able to solve homelessness. I know Jonathan, you said you're going to have it solved by July, it's already November, but it's okay, give me some more time. Question for you is, when does our current contract end and when would this current, this new contract start?
Current contract expires October 31st. If approved tonight, this contract would begin tonight, effectively tomorrow.
Okay, so one of the concerns that I had is you said you don't have the staff to perform the contract that we have right here. If you're starting tomorrow or even starting October 31st, go ahead buddy, I see you chomping at the bit.
So what we would do is, so like I said, we've already started interviewing, we got to get a confirmation that we have a contract that we can actually hire.
You're working on it.
What we would be doing is, we would be, Carla would start working some, some relationships. We'd start networking, we have some other additional outreach staff. We would redirect, just to get the lay of the land. And so we would be, as we're onboarding, we would be engaging, I think, should we be approved? We already have, Jonathan's already set up a meeting with your current provider so that we can have a conversation with them, so we can do a warm handoff. So we get this sense of urgency and we're going to try and match that sense of urgency.
Okay, and that was my big thing too, is to make sure that you're not walking in blind. You know, if you got an extra 10 days, meet with our current service provider, figure out where the recurring problems are, where the areas are that need the most work and kind of where Carla would be most effective. So excited Carla's going to be boots on the ground, making friends with our community here and kind of getting them where they need to go. So that's good. The Oceanside Navigation Center that you run, I know we don't necessarily contract with you from a bed standpoint. I think that we do interfaith in La Pasada right now. Is this something that we'd be looking, I mean, obviously not me at all, but from a bed standpoint, I mean, maybe it's a question for Jonathan, are we looking at maybe having them service beds? Like is that how your organization works, is you take them to your facility? Or you find taking them to the facilities we have for them?
Great, we work within the confines that we have. You guys have your navigation center here, we'd be working with that navigation center. Currently, our service agreement with the City of Oceanside is for Oceanside residents. And so we need to honor that. Do we believe that there's a regional need and we love to work with you guys on shelter coordination? I have a whole other soapbox I could get on and add. So yeah, I would love to see as we continue, how do we make these shelter beds regional beds? But just truth in advertising, our relationship with the City of Oceanside, currently we serve Oceanside residents, so we would not be taking anyone from-
Well, that's fine, for me, I actually prefer that because I feel like for us, it's a little, you know, less threatening of a transition per se is you pick them up, you meet them where they're at and then you take them somewhere that's familiar. I mean, whether it's our navigation center or another property that we possibly are coming on or something where they feel comfortable and then your social workers and your crew follow up with them in the existing beds that we've already contracted. So like not having to spend more money on more stuff, that is definitely a big thing. And I think really, let me see what the last question I had was. Okay, so the contract I was looking at was for $500,000 and you said it was like $455,000 in your little presentation right there. Is the, the contract we're approving is up to $500,000? Obviously, if they come in below that, that's great. And then from a cost standpoint, how is their fee relative to the other company we were using?
It's approximately the same.
Oh, great, so they're going to be providing a better service at the same price. Wow, well, I think as long as you can, you know, deliver what you're saying and that, you know, our results are good, that would be great. One thing I didn't see in the agenda report, and mind you, it was 186-page agenda report. So if it was in here somewhere and I flew by it, I apologize. But I didn't see your actual intake form. And that's really what I'm wondering is, do you have like an intake form for like clients, like regular questions? So I think Exodus was like, hey, when we meet with clients, here's kind of what we go down and kind of ask them, you know? Like you're not trying, and again, I love the Roman road, all that good stuff, but I want to make sure our approach is a standard approach. It's not, you know, necessarily ministerial approach, it's more of a, hey, let's get you in a bed type of approach. So do you have a standard set of questions that you use, a standard intake form for every client? And can we see that or is it in my report here somewhere?
Well, yeah, I would, I would highlight HMIS. So when we intake someone, we use a standard intake. It's already embedded inside the homeless management information system.
Okay, so there's nothing new, nothing different that you do? It's all government monitored and checks all those boxes as far as we're concerned?
Yes.
Okay, well, I appreciate you explaining yourself. I can tell that you're extremely fired up and passionate about what it is that you do and I hope that you guys bring that same energy and passion to our city and help us, you know, battle what is, you know, a recurring issue within our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Melendez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Paul and Carla, for being here and for sharing your passion, your vision, for stepping up and contributing to this bid process. I have a couple of questions, but I think the biggest thing is that we're, have the opportunity to work together on resolving homelessness permanently. We have a really robust strategic plan to address homelessness. And outreach is one of those aspects, right? So as far as this contract goes, I see that you've been very successful in other areas. And I think if we have the opportunity to work with you, we have initial one year to see if this is the best fit for Vista, right? And I think that we do have the best fit for Vista in front of us. I think that there's some really strong, you know, strengths, there's some big strengths in your application. And the biggest one is that you have been identified by our city staff and by, you know, external eyes taking a look at the application, that you're the best fit for the job. And so that comes, that staff recommendation is huge for me because I know that our staff working in housing and homelessness have been managing so much related to this issue. We have programs for our Buena Creek Navigation Center. We are running programs for rental assistance. We're doing more tenant supports and referrals and just general housing and, and community needs for our communities that have a lot of needs here in Vista. So I appreciate you being here and wanting to take your expertise and bring it to Vista. And I hope that as you continue to work with our agency, you're able to provide that flexibility that you're describing and, and really mold into and settle into the best type of service for our community. Because every community is different. We know it's not a one-size-fits-all. A lot of the folks who are experiencing homelessness in Vista, if they were in Oceanside, they would be having a different experience, right? And so that experiential part of their challenge with being on the streets, I appreciate that a lot. And I appreciate Carla too, that you're coming with lived experience. I know that when you are encountering someone on the street, you're going to be using best practices from RTFH. Then the other part of the strength here is that you are integrated into the COC. So we know that you're going to be up and running with HMIS and you're going to be, every single encounter is going to be identifiable, right, to their larger journey and that hopefully the services that they receive from San Diego Rescue Mission through the City of Vista will be those resolving services, right? And it may be to our shelter, our own Buena Creek Navigation Center, but it may be to interfaith, it might be to Operation Hope, right? So you guys are going to be the boots on the ground that are addressing those immediate needs for people. Maybe you're helping people get their IDs. Maybe you're helping people get access to rental assistance, right? Maybe you're helping people get jobs, but you're providing those case management services, is that right? For all the folks that you're encountering, so I think that that's important. One of the things that I wanted to check in with staff is, when it comes to our other programs, right? You know, we do have some robust programs. Our council has put a lot of funding towards different programs and they can be competitive, right? What's, what is the oversight from our staff to, I guess, make those referrals, right? So is San Diego Rescue Mission working directly with RETRED for shelter referrals? Or will they be going through our city staff?
At this time, we're planning to still keep it going through city staff.
Okay, I would prefer-
But they'll get prioritization.
With the prioritization that we currently follow. And I would prefer that because I don't want any one organization that we contract with to get too big, right? I think it's important to have checks and balances. So not only are you identified as the best person for the job and clearly have a lot of passion and expertise that we've been able to see here, you are integrated into the continuum of care and our contract allows for that level of oversight where we have checks and balances. And all of our programs are being administered through a variety of providers and of course, through our city staff as well when it comes to our shelter beds. So I know that you have the potential to help us expand our resources, right? I wouldn't want our outreach provider to have, to be so heavily dependent on our limited shelter beds when we're really contracting with you and hiring you to help us find more creative solutions, right? We got people calling our city all the time for those shelter beds because they know that through the City of Vista, that's that direct referral because we are providing those shelter beds. But there's so many resources throughout the county, right? And throughout North County and through in the City of Vista that we want to make sure people get connected to and you guys are the experts for that. So I really appreciate that. One of the questions that I had was about staffing. And do the staff that you're planning to bring on, right? We know we haven't onboarded them yet, but they're, you know, they're waiting, they're somewhere, okay? We're going to bring them in. Do they, if they're working under the City of Vista outreach contract, right, that we could approve tonight, are they serving in any other areas of your organization? Are they full-time working for Vista Outreach?
Full-time.
Okay.
That's the staff. The program manager we do have will also help with our Oceanside team, but that's already, you guys would only pay for the portion of time that that program manager is here and that's the 80% of the time.
Okay, and I understand that your staff members, they are required to sign a statement of faith. Could you tell me a little bit more about that?
Yeah, we are a religious not-for-profit organization. And so one of the things, and so as a result of that, the laws we are, that provide that guidance and protection is that you are able to contract with us as long as it is for a non-religious service, which this is. And then we will, we do hire based on our religious not-for-profit. And so we did have a good conversation and I do believe your city, your staff can, we did double-check with the city attorney, but that is, that is the parameters. We are, we are a faith-based organization and so we have asked that, yep, that's going to be the thing is that we're going to, we're going to hire based off of our religious exemption and our religious identity.
Yes, and that is your opportunity to do that, absolutely. Do we have that in front of us to know what that says? Would you be able to relay that to us, what your statement of faith is for your staff?
Absolutely, it's on our website, so yes.
I didn't see in the packet, but I feel like it's important for the staffing conversation. And my background, many people don't know that I have, you know, like many people have a faith background. I have a degree in biblical studies. And I was actually on a path to become a pastor when I found public service. And so I think faith is very important. But my role here is serving the public, right, in a secular capacity. And so one of my concerns is, you know, if a statement of faith is compulsory to work for San Diego Rescue Mission, does that limit the pool of potential employees that could be working for this City of Vista contract? And it may very well limit the pool of employees. In addition to being able to hear from you on what the statement of faith is, I would also like to hear if you do ever get, you know, staff or recruitments that you're looking to work with who say that they don't want to sign the statement of faith.
Yeah, so, hold on just a second, I'm just trying to pull up, thank you for your patience.
Yes, no, please take your time.
Able to identify where-
For your presentation too, that was great.
Probably here would be, and if it's okay, I'll bring you my phone and you can read through our statement of faith.
Oh, okay, is it longer than a, okay, I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, I see. So I'm going to read this just for public process. State men of faith, the San Diego Rescue Mission desires to see men and women come to know Jesus Christ as Lord and Savior. The role of rescue is to save men, women and children from spiritual death and start them on the road to spiritual maturity and newness of life, identity in Christ. We strive to be faithful to our call by preaching the gospel of salvation through Jesus Christ and Him alone. The San Diego Rescue Mission statement of faith reads, "We believe the Bible to be inspired and valuable, ultimately authoritative word of God. We believe there is one God eternally existing as Father, Son and Holy Spirit. We believe that the Lord Jesus Christ is deity, that He was born of a virgin, that we are redeemed by His atoning death through His shed blood, that He was bodily resurrected and ascended into heaven and that He will come again in power and great glory. We believe that men and women and children are saved by grace through faith and not of themselves, which is the gift of God, at which time they are regenerated by the Holy Spirit. We believe in the present ministry of the Holy Spirit by whom Christ indwells each believer, enabling them to live by a godly life of obedience as they reach for maturity. And we believe the Holy Spirit unites all true believers in the Lord Jesus Christ and that together they form one body, the church." So I recognize many of these statements, right, that are, I think, recognizable to many people of faith. And so how would you support your staff who are obligated to sign that statement of faith to perform their duties in line with the type of nonpartisan and universal secular standards of care that we are looking for, for, looking for from a provider?
Thank you so much, a great question. Same exact way as I did as a chaplain. So as a Navy chaplain, I was paid by the federal government and we had four obligations, provide, facilitate, care and advise. My care and advise functions were I cared for every single sailor regardless and my advise function was to provide guidance. These were not religious acts. I provided for my own people or, but then also understand I facilitated. So actually I had, I actually facilitated on the USS New Orleans pagans who wanted to get together. And so the way I said it, best way for me to ensure my free exercise of religion is to ensure everyone has free exercise of religion. We understand we are operating in a secular and a pluralistic environment. So what we do is we have our faith-based elements are a part of our faith-based program. And just as many other people of faith done and many other faith-based organizations do, including the Salvation Army that has federal, state, county, local government contracts. including the Salvation Army that has federal, state, county, local government contracts, and the Salvation Army Statement of Faith is very similar to our Statement of Faith, we understand the role, there's a line there. And so, we keep our faith-based element for our faith-based programming. And when we're operating in the public sphere, we are fierce professionals, as Councilman Mark Green picked up on. And we expect our team to be professional. We expect them to respect and honor everybody. And our service delivery model is irregardless of the person standing in front of us. We are going to get, they're going to get the same passionate, compassionate service, they're going to get the same fierce professionalism, they're going to get the same access. And, and if they want to come to a faith-based program, fantastic. If the best place for them to get connected to is the North County LGBT Center, guess where we're going to connect them to? North County LGBTQ Center. We're going to help them access the resource that's best for them. And that's what we do, and that's what we do every day. And so, so yeah, how are we going to do that? The exact same way I did when I was on active duty. Exact same way we operate currently, where we're operating low-barrier shelter for the City of Oceanside with no faith-based requirement. We have a service agreement with the city. Yes, in that case, we are privately funding, but it's a service agreement with the City of Oceanside. And so, right now, people who come to our North County, our Oceanside Navigation Center, they receive the same quality service, and we would offer the, that's just how we serve. So I, I hope that answered your question, but yeah.
And so, would you affirm that the statement of faith that you require of your staff is a statement for themselves, and that that statement of faith is not imposed upon the clients that you serve?
Absolutely, that's why it's a statement of faith for employment, yes.
And then about the employment part, do you find that people, you know, interview with you or apply to work for you and then decline an opportunity because they are not interested in signing a statement of faith?
You know, and I actually will steal from my days, because I actually did work for the Salvation Army. And I think we do get people who understand our ethos, and so when they apply to us, they apply because they know who we are.
They like your work.
Yeah, exactly, and so, and they know that we're faith-based. I mean, I think that's one of the things, we, we like that. I like how, again, I'm going to steal something from Donnie, we want to lead with our windows wide open. And so, we try and be really clear about who we are, so that people, when they come, they're kind of like, okay, because right, it's not just about competence. It is, do they, is that the right culture fit for them? And so, if it is, fantastic, and we, you know, they go through the process.
Okay, well, I'm really looking forward to having more conversations and seeing the way that you can come in and support folks experiencing homelessness in Vista. Like you're saying, it's all about relationships, right? And this is a relationship where we can bring on, obviously, a powerhouse, right, of an organization. You've been doing a lot of work for many years, and we, we need the support. We absolutely need the support here in Vista. We want to improve our outreach so that every single person on the street has loving and caring contact, and is embraced by the city and supported by the city. So I am confident in your intention to perform for us in that way. And I'm grateful for the staff working with you to develop a contract that honors everyone. And I would love to hear if any of my colleagues have further questions, but I really appreciate you being here. And of course, do support this, this item. And would like to see maybe if there's a review period that we can check in, as this is a new contract, maybe within, you know, a couple months. You know, as staff is getting onboarded and stuff, you know, we're going to kind of be mindful of the, the process that it takes to get everybody onboard. But I would love to have maybe a check-in in a couple of months to see how everything's going. So that's all for me, and just want to say thank you for being here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you so much. I do agree with the review. I think a six-month review would be important for both parties, right? And my next question is for city attorney. Understanding that this is someone that we're contracting with, part of the funding that we're providing is going for, to Rescue Mission in order to employ folks to do this. So can you just let me know the statement of faith that employees do have to sign in order to be part of this organization and do the work that we're looking to do? Can you give me information as to how that's not a conflict, or?
So it's not a conflict, because it's, they're both exempted from federal and state laws. So the Civil Rights Act does have an exemption for the religious organizations, saying that they can have a religious preference to hire employees if it's to carry out the function of that organization. And the California FIAH also has an exception, says nonprofit religious organizations are not considered employers for unlawful practices. So they're exempt from both state and federal on these issues.
Okay, thank you for, you know, it, regardless of what my faith is, it is actually a point of contention for me, because I see us providing public dollars, and there is a process that's barring folks who may have a different religious view, which doesn't change who they are as a person, or the services that they can provide, but they are not able to provide those services if they're unwilling to do the statement of faith. So obviously, that's, that's kind of a point of contention for me. I wanted to look at some of the reporting. When it says demographics of those being served, would they focus on diversity, diversity, equity, and inclusion? What is the procedure that you have to collect this type of information?
Yeah, thank you, and we want to add that. So again, we're using the standard demographic information that is required by RTFH. While this is to our shelter program, I'd just like to highlight an actual practice that we do, and happy to show you guys those numbers. But once a quarter, we actually look at our exits from our shelter system based off of race, because what we do know is that people of color can, one, first of all, they're disproportionately in part of our population experiencing homelessness. And then oftentimes, when it comes to punitive measures, they're also disproportionately represented. So we do two screenings. We actually look at the people that are being served by our program, by, and since by our shelter program, we'll be able to do this also in our outreach program. Are they matching the demographic of the larger population experiencing homelessness? Sadly, again, that population is disproportionately represented by people of color. Then for our shelter system, we actually do a second screening for any exits by staff. And so we look at the racial demographic of those who have been exited by our staff to make sure that there's no disparity there. And so we do that on a review, and thankfully, we've been able to demonstrate that we are consistent. So we have a proportional representation of the larger community. And when there is a negative exit, it's proportional based off of race, and there's no racial bias. So that's just an example of one of the ways in which we do that. And so that is part of our commitment, is to make sure that we serve all people fairly and equitably. And we're happy to look at, and again, follow any best practices that RTFH has. But with respect to that, we're going to expect that we're capturing all of the demographic information. That includes both race and gender identity. And what we would expect is that our service delivery model should be equitable. In other words, it should mirror what the population that we're serving looks like. And then we, we pull that data specifically from RTFH.
Okay, so the example that you provided was someone who is experiencing homelessness that has a demographic factor of race. But what about gender? What is your practice to, you know, what type of question? What is the procedure? Because, you know, when you say that there's certain demographics that are experiencing homelessness at a higher rate, one of those happens to be the LGBTQ plus community. And if there is already this idea that there's a faith-based organization that potentially they do not see as welcoming, as potentially a different organization, that is quite an obstacle there. So one, I want to understand, you know, how are you collecting that information? And two, you know, are you seeing that in your current practice you actually are having a certain proportion of folks going through your program that does mirror the quantity of folks that are in the LGBTQ plus community that are experiencing homelessness?
Yeah, so thank you. So just so, for the one we look at currently for our shelter system, yes, that is based off of race. We do, when we collect the demographic data, again, we're just simply using the RTF, or the, sorry, it's not RTFH, HMIS, because these are head standards for that information. And so, we'd be happy to be able to make sure that we are proportionally serving. We do, that's just going to go back to relationship. And so one of the things I will offer is that, and I'll rely on Carla, is word on the streets out there. You know how we serve. And so, we do expect that as we are embedding and becoming more a part of your guys' landscape and our, into your ecosystem, word's going to get out, and we are happy to be evaluated on our service delivery. And our expectation is that members of the LGBT community are going to feel that they are cared for the same way as every single person. And we're happy to be held accountable to that, and we're happy to have city staff hold us accountable to that, because we are committed to serving all people equally. That's why we incorporate. We didn't have to do that, the DIE on our exits based on race. You know why we did that? Because the Housing Commission did it exactly one time, and they were able to show that there was a disproportionate number of people of color that were being negatively exited. And I was committed to make sure we didn't have that same issue in our shelter system. So I went ahead and we implemented it on our own without any government oversight at all, because we're committed to equity and inclusion and how we provide our services, so.
Yes, it seems, it seems like you're taking strides on the race side, but the fact that gender is currently absent, and there is no, I'm not seeing anything in front of me as part of this packet, or potentially if you could produce such a thing where in your policy and procedures it addresses this issue. I see that as a fundamental issue. And I would have hoped that there would be something in place that you could show us as we are trying to move forward with this contract now. So I, I mean, is this something that you're going to be able to create within the next 30 days?
I guess I'm a little confused, because like I said, when we input someone into our system, what we're using is we're using HMIS. HMIS has both gender and sexual orientation and racial demographics.
I understand.
So I guess, yes, that's going to be a part of our process.
You said that you're not doing that with gender right now. So that's where I'm confused. There, there seems, and this is my, this is my time to speak right now. But it seems like there's a conflation between the program that you have as a shelter and what you're going to provide as outreach. And what I'm not too happy with right now is that I'm not seeing a clear demarcation between, because what you're doing is you're utilizing samples and examples from one program, but that is not congruent to what we're offering a contract for right now. So excuse me if I'm getting confused, but it is confusing when you're moving one thing from this side. We're talking about this, right? So, you know, I, I am just really concerned about that. The other thing is, you said that you're going to be doing training for LGBTQ plus awareness and sensitivity. And so is there a contract that you have where, you know, folks that are going to be hired on within a certain amount of time are going to go through that training? What is, who is this training with? You know, the, the San Diego Center, down in San Diego, has an incredible training institute. You know, that's something that I would like to see folks go through in order to be, you know, extra available to folks that may have a different background that potentially needs, you know, you need cultural and sensitivity training to be able to offer those, so.
I'm sorry if you did not catch that. That's actually what, and we've actually already worked with the city staff on that. Our next training is in November with the center in San Diego to provide that specific training. And as I also mentioned, we also do the cultural competency training from the National Alliance to End Homelessness. So that actually, and we've already asked by city staff, has already asked that we provide them verification of that training for all people working on this contract.
Yeah, and so when, when is it that we're going to be able to see that verification?
The training is scheduled for November, anticipating as we hire them on. So after the training, in November?
So there's not a contract prior to the training? Including that you are part of a training program?
Oh yeah, we can provide you the name of the trainer. Yes, we have, we actually have our Leadership and Development Manager is currently working with the person, same person who provided our staff training this last summer. So yes, we can provide you that name.
Well, I would like, you know, usually there's some kind of a contract if you're going into the training institute, right? It costs a sum of money to go through it per member. So I would assume that if you're going to be doing that, is this like a one-time training, or is this like the full training? I'm asking that question, and you don't have to answer right now, but I would expect to see something very soon. To my city staff, is that something that would, we would be able to showcase to the council in a timely fashion?
Yep, we will present that to the city council as soon as we receive verification from the contractor.
Okay, awesome. Let's see. Also on the reporting, I know it's, it's important to get success stories, but I also don't see anything on the reporting that addresses failures. Folks that are exiting into either non-permanent shelter or some other kind of, you know, what some have considered a negative exit. So are we, what's the data point that we're going to be receiving on a little bit more detail as to why folks are being negatively exited?
Well, this is, we're serving unsheltered individuals, and so street case management is we don't give up on them. So they're not going to be negatively exited. We're going to continue to engage them and work them. That's why we have the by-name list. Sadly, there's nowhere else you can exit to except the street. And this contract is to serve people living on the street.
I'm aware of the-
So I don't, and I guess, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I feel like you're being a little combative right now. So I need you to stop talking. Okay. I understand the population that we're working with. When it comes to folks that are not able to exit to a positive exit, okay, this is just like terminology that we've heard from other service providers. So I don't understand the contention. What is the data point? Or what information is the council going to receive when folks do not exit into a positive situation? Can you tell me that?
Yes, they would be on the by-name list, where we would be prioritizing what is going on. So what you would be getting would be information about what is their, what is their barrier? That's the purpose of a by-name list, is it allows you to be able to do the deep dive. And people, you're not moving forward, you're building an understanding of what their barriers are, so that we, that's part of the reason for a case conferencing and care coordination. And so they stay on the by-name list until we're able to resolve them. And you would have access to that by-name list so that you could be able to see what are the resources, what's our shortfall? Why can't we get this person moving forward? Is it a gap in service? What is the need that we have? And then we would be able to try and bring that resource to meet that person. So that's, that's where that person would reside. We'd expect that person to reside on the by-name list until we're able to resolve it positively.
Okay, thank you. City staff, is this by-name list going to be added to our weekly update with the rest of the information that we receive?
Yeah, we could provide a summary of the by-name list results. And I might add also, so another metric you might be interested in receiving is the length of time somebody has been engaged before they've exited, which could offer the, I think, the information the council member is looking for, yeah.
Correct, and obviously, we don't want to breach any confidentiality, right? So I would assume that we are not going to be getting any specific information to the individual, but I would like to see that in our weekly update. Because, you know, one of the reasons why we're even having this discussion is that we did not see that the outreach that we were providing was meeting folks where they were at. I want to make sure, you know, when I am talking to an individual who's experiencing homelessness, and it is 7:30 PM, that I can get on the phone with someone at the city and connect to resources. to resources. Is and all city staff, is that something in this, you know, almost 200 pages or whatnot? Is that the type of relationship that we're creating here? Because that was like, one of the biggest issues that we had with our previous provider?
Yeah, absolutely. Like Paul mentioned, they are committed to attending the monthly Standing Committee on Homelessness meetings where we can further refine the program, request additional dating metrics to be reported, and grow the program according to the council's needs.
John, if you could answer if there's after hours service, I think that's what the council
I'm sorry. Yes, yeah, absolutely. So we do have the exempt member on staff who will be available after hours, including weekends and weeknights.
Okay, fantastic. I think we really need that. And is there going to be a hotline that's managed after hours as well?
Yes, yeah. So the hotline number will reach the program as the manager who's exempt, who will we will have access to after hours.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. I think that, yeah, those are all my questions. Thanks.
Councilmember O'Donnell.
Paul, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for your service. Both my grandfather served in the Navy as well. So I really do sincerely appreciate that. I know there's a lot of tough questions that have been levied, and I'm going to have a couple more for you. So just be prepared for it. I know that you had said that you had done training with the the center in San Diego. How long has that relationship been going on for?
We identified it probably at the beginning of the year that that would be a wise thing to do. So our downtown navigation center at that time, our associate director, who's now our leadership and development manager, reached out to them, began a conversation with them, and then we established and had that training this summer.
And given the population I know that we have here in San Diego County of the LGBTQ plus community, is there a reason that it hadn't been done sooner? Or, and, you know, it's something that's very necessary, because it is a large community within with those that are impacted through homelessness. And so I just I'm curious as to why it hadn't been done prior to that.
Yeah. So as I think, as I mentioned, I did get my MSW from USC. We have, we've had, we've been doing this type of training. We did do that. We've been doing the cultural competency training from the National Alliance in homelessness. One of the things we are as an organization is we have a growth mindset, and we're constantly improving. So we were doing that training internally. We got to the point where we felt that that was no longer effective. And so we brought in who we felt would be a strategic partner to help us provide that training.
And so I am a Catholic. I can tell you that I had to jump through a lot of hoops. I shouldn't even say hoops, but they there's a lot of documentation that you need to provide before you can get married in a Catholic church, before your child can get baptized, all of those things. So with your mission statement of signing on, do you have to verify that? Or is that just somebody saying, yes, I agree to what this is?
They sign that, yes, I agree.
So so this is my largest concern. And it's not that you're faith based. It sounds like you're doing tremendous work. My concern is that the individuals that may be hired, right? Especially if they are deeply religious, may not be able to provide the services to certain individuals. And not to say that they will discriminate, but there's always that potential when that is a requirement in order to be a part of this organization. And so is there a policy you have in place that prevents that? And I don't just mean training. I mean, if somebody cannot, based on their faith, feel it within their capacity to service and provide service to an individual, what is the mechanism to handling that situation?
Well, what would happen is then they would not be performing, right? So so let's take this practically. So we have a person on the by name list, and that person is a member of the LGBT community. And I have a case manager, our outreach workers refusing to work with that person. That's going to start to result in disciplinary action. So first thing would be, hey, like, we might do some retraining at first, we would reset expectations. And then that person's going to be put on a performance, individual performance plan. And if they are unable to serve, then they are going to lose their job. And so it would be the same as this is any service delivery. So when we're serving anybody, if they cannot meet standards. And so again, our standards are RTFH's community standards for street case management. If they are unable to meet the standards that have been outlined by our continuum of care, because that's what we said we would do, then we're going to hold them accountable through our standard employee process. And they will either adjust or be asked to leave the organization.
That's fair. I do want to echo Councilmember Contreras's idea and thoughts that for the intake information and the exit information, that we can get a more detailed list, and whether those are included in that intake and exit information. Because one of the things that lacked with our current service provider is information. And when we requested it, we were not able to get the information that we requested. And so I think something that'd be beneficial is not just the touch points, or rather, the time in a shelter, but how many touch points were there along the way to get them into a shelter? Because one of the things that we constantly ask for is a by name list, and it couldn't be provided. But the other thing is, we don't know how many points of contact have been made before somebody was willing to accept. And as somebody who has a family member that experienced homelessness for a long time, I know it took my aunt 10 years to get off the streets. And you can name everything under the sun that contributed to that. But it was her waking up one day and deciding, and this is not the life that I want. And that's the exception, not the norm. And so what I'd like to know is, what are those barriers? And if you have talked to somebody 20, 30 times, what different avenues are we taking, approaches are we taking to try and get them the services that they need? So that would just be one thing. Staffing is another concern. I know Councilmember Green had brought it up. I just want to make sure that we are staffed appropriately to manage the what's our last count on individuals that are living without shelter in our community?
That's currently roughly about 90.
So I just want to make sure that the staff and people aren't getting overloaded with case cases in order to try and provide the best services that we can. Beyond that, I just, I just want to make sure that the services provided are going to be the best for our community. Because this is something that we do have a huge strategic plan to try and address. We've been working very hard as a council, long before my time on this body, long after my time will come. It's something that we are trying to tackle. And so when concerns are raised to me about certain issues that may or may not have happened, I don't know. But I just want to make sure that we can alleviate those. And so what I would ask is that instead of a six month review, we do a four month review. So that way, we can see where you're at with staff levels, where you're at with intake levels, what we've done to correct the intake forms, as well as the outtake information, and just see where we're at in this relationship, and what we can do better, and maybe, maybe what's working really well. And the only thing I would caution on you, because you said you're going to reach out to our current service provider, do your homework, even with the information that you get. And that's all I'm going to say. But I appreciate the presentation. I appreciate your very honest answers. In four months, we will review again. And at least that is my hope, that we can bring this back to review. And I'll probably have more questions then, based on the data that we can correlate and get back from you. But again, I appreciate the work of staff on this and look forward to seeing what happens.
Councilmember Green?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. And once again, thank you for your presentation. I know it's a tough line that you are walking right now. But the truth is, you know, we we serve a God who says, you know, infiltrate, don't isolate. So serve everybody, meet them where they're at, and just be prepared with an answer. You know what I mean? So I'm really excited that you guys can work. What I'd like to do is move to approve the contract as presented, with the stipulation that there will be a review of the contract within four months to review all of the items that our council is concerned with, the intake, the outtake, and the metrics of performance. Thank you.
Councilmember Melendez?
I'll go ahead and second that. Thanks.
Well, I would just add in conclusion that I've had the opportunity over the last several years to get to know the staff of the Rescue Mission, and to get to see your facility in Oceanside, to get to see the downtown facility and the new one in National City, and very impressed with the facilities and the people. And, you know, in the many interactions I've now had with the Rescue Mission, I've never seen anybody treated with anything but the utmost of respect and dignity. And I won't ask, because I already know the answer, but I know that your ethos and values as an organization, and indeed, it's underpinned by your faith and driven by your faith, that you treat every human being with love and respect, dignity. And I know that you're going to do that in our community. I'm very impressed with the results that you've had in Oceanside. I think it's going to be a powerful thing for us to be able to have some coordination with our neighbor. I hope it's the beginning of more regional coordination among cities in our area, and our ability to work together and be able to leverage resources. So I'm really excited about the opportunity to move forward and work with the Rescue Mission. Thanks for making this proposal and coming here to to have yourself tested by the fire. And with that, we have, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. That item is approved with four votes in favor, one against. That'll bring us to our last item of the evening. Resolution considering opposition to commercial flights at Palomar McClellan Airport. Any members of the public wish to speak on this item that may indicate so by using the raise their hand feature by pressing star nine or submitting a request to speak card. Speakers will be called upon after the presentation. Councilmember O'Donnell asked for this item to be on the agenda, so we will ask him to introduce it.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to read through this as quickly as I can. I just want to make sure the public's aware of the resolution that's before us. So this this resolution is to oppose American Airlines bringing in commercial flights into Palomar Airport. I received an outpouring of community feedback relative to this matter, people in opposition. This is not something that would just impact the city of Vista. This would impact San Marcos, Escondido, Carlsbad, Oceanside, many of our neighboring communities. And so I'll just I'll just go through this as quickly as I can, and then give other comments based on or after that, rather. So the city, city council of city of Vista does the does resolve as follows. Finding, city council hereby finds, and you know what, I'm not going to read all this, because this is just a long resolution to read. So I'm just going to let you know what my concerns are. So outside of noise, can I'm just, I'm sorry, guys, it's just, it's a long one. So outside of the noise pollution, the air pollution, all of the other things that can be taking place, there is concern over the actuality of the size of airplanes. But you have noise, you have hours of operation, you have air pollution, the length of the runway for the size of a jet that they're talking about is about 750 feet short of what it needs to be to fully to fully be able to intake a plane of this size. There are safety issues that go with this as well. There's a letter I received today from C4A, and that is from a pilot who used to fly in the military, who now lands at Palomar Airport, concerned about the length of the runway, the 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 wings, length of the wings on the plane, as well as anything as far as safety procedures are concerned, is American Airlines going to be the ones responsible if there's a crash of one of their airlines? Are they going to try and subsidize our first responders to try and provide safety measures and safety networks to ensure that if there is a crash, that God forbid, but that they're providing services to prevent it? So like I said, there's been a lot of a lot of community input. And I just want everybody to know, I travel a lot for work. And if you could put an airline five miles away from my home versus me having to get up at 4:30 in the morning to catch a 6:30 flight down in San Diego, I would take it all day long. But I'm not going to outweigh the needs of the community for my own personal benefit. And while it may sound good, I hear airplanes every single day flying over my home. And I've always noticed them. And I can tell you, my little kid notices them because he looks up and points at them every single time. And it happens continuously throughout the afternoon and throughout the day when he's home. So I just wanted to share these thoughts. I don't know where the council stands on this, but I believe that you would all probably be in line with wanting to support this. But do we have any public speakers? So this is what I would say to our public speakers today. I believe that this will pass our council. And so if you would still like to come speak, that is obviously your right. And I would much appreciate to hear what you have to say. If if you just want to raise your hand and say that I support this resolution versus coming up to speak, that would also be welcomed. But Mayor, if you would read off the names, and I will let the public decide if that is what they'd like to do or not. And then at the conclusion of public comment, I would like to call the question.
Sure. We have Cliff Kaiser in opposition, Jamie Abbott in opposition.
Oh, if they want to speak, they can. I
Did you want me to read off the names?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I was going to let them come down and speak if they chose to.
Did you want me to read them?
Yes.
Okay. Samuel Hershey, who did not indicate, Gary Garretson in favor, Matt Shaker in favor, Dom Betro in favor, Vicky Sayaj in favor, Sid Rothenberg in opposition, Stephanie Jacklin in favor, Tazina Zam in opposition, Pia Romano in favor, Terry Brady in favor, Ron Bird in favor. So with that, without objection, we'll proceed to hear from our public speakers, if you'd like to hear it on this. We'll start with Cliff Kaiser.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I am in opposition to this. As the mayor had mentioned, I am a private pilot, and I also am currently the chairman of the county appointed Palomar Airport Association. I'm Palomar Airport Advisory Committee, and I emphasize the word advisory. And so as I read through the agenda report, I noticed that it starts off with a little bit of strong wording where it says it finds and declares. And that's fine. But as I read through it, there are several minor errors and a couple significant errors that you might want to consider changing. So let's start with paragraph C, where it says that the the departing airport aircraft at 6:15 would be in direct violation of the current voluntary noise abatement plan. Minor issue, it's a voluntary noise abatement procedure, that's an FAA term. Major issue is that it's if it's voluntary, it can't be a violation. You can deviate from a voluntary plan, or you can go outside of the intended flight plan, but it's not a violation. The departing aircraft that's at 6:15 is in fact before the voluntary quiet hours expire at seven. That's to meet scheduling requirements in Phoenix, and it's perfectly good business reason for American Airlines. I understand that people may not like that. That's not my issue to argue. The return in flight FYI is going to be at 2:00 PM and 6:30 PM. Paragraph D, it says that the approval of a commercial flight contract with the county, and that's significantly wrong, because the county does not approve any airline, American Airlines, any aircraft approve or deny any aircraft from landing at the airport. That's something between the FAA and the aircraft or the or the airlines. So what the county is going to approve is a contract for leases, for ticket counter, for offices, for American Airlines staff. They have no say in whether American Airlines lands there and takes their scheduled service there at all. Paragraph E, it talks about the aircraft being substantially larger than it currently designed for the airport. The aircraft will submit to the FAA, that aircraft, and how they will use it, how much fuel, how many passengers they will put on it. And there is no way that the FAA would allow them to fly that aircraft out of this airport without it being completely safe and sound. And so again, it's when we talk about the size of the aircraft, whether it's a classification, and it's against FAA recommendations for that particular design classification, that's, that's a false statement. The discretion is with the airlines, with the FAA, and
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jamie Abbott from the county of San Diego, followed by Samuel Hershey. If you would, if you heard your name called, please go ahead and come forward and be ready to speak. If you want to take a seat in the front row and be ready to speak when your name is called, we'd appreciate that to move things along. Mr. Abbott?
Yes, sir. Mayor Franklin, members of the city council, good evening. My name is Jamie Abbott, and I'm the director of airports for the county of San Diego. We're excited for the opportunity to welcome American Airlines to McClellan Palomar Airport and provide connectivity to residents of the North County region. I think it's important to provide some information relating to the resolution before you this evening. Palomar Airport is designated and certified by the FAA as a commercial service airport. Although the airport does have general aviation activity, commercial airline service is supported by both the county's approved master plan and the FAA. The passenger service currently exists at the airport with GSX and Advanced Air serving destinations like Scottsdale and Las Vegas. Palomar also has a history of providing commercial airline service from 1991 to 2015. Airlines such as American, United, US Airways have all provided airline service to Palomar. Regarding noise, Palomar Airport has Regarding noise, Palomar Airport has a voluntary noise abatement program. There are no flight restrictions, curfews, or violations as, as it's a voluntary program. The program was developed with input from the community, air traffic control, airport stakeholders, and airport staff, and was designated to provide guidance and recommendations to pilots to help minimize noise levels over residential areas. Airport staff continually performs outreach through the airport's advisory committee, website, flyers, and meetings with flight schools. Aircraft safety is the primary concern and consideration for pilots in the FAA. The county asked the FAA through a noise study to, for the ability to implement mandatory notes, uh, flight restrictions, and that request was denied. Specific to American Airlines, the aircraft they will use is called an Embraer 175, a common aircraft used by airlines to serve airports like Palomar and the regions like, uh, North County. American works directly with the FAA to approve the operations of the aircraft at Palomar, which includes the length of the existing runway. The FAA has exclusive jurisdiction over the safety of aircraft operations. American will be offering two flights a day to Phoenix. The final flight of the day is scheduled to land at Palomar at 6:30 PM and doesn't conflict with the voluntary quiet hours. That airplane will be used to fly the 6:15, uh, flight the next morning, which will connect passengers from Phoenix and beyond. The county board will be considering a lease agreement, which is for the use of airport facilities like the terminal building, apron, office space, ticket counter. The FAA grant obligations, uh, is required in the county to accommodate aeronautical activity 24/7 without discrimination based on the like type and kind of aircraft. Um, it prohibits us from establishing use restrictions. I would like to end by sharing that commercial service, uh, airline service strength, strengthens the economy through job creation, increased access to air travel, and investments in the community. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. I'm sure we might have a few questions for you. Appreciate you being here tonight. Um, next we'll go to Samuel Hershey, followed by Gary Garretson, followed by Matt Shaker. Samuel Hershey, is Samuel with us tonight? Mr. Hershey, is that, oh, no, okay. He's not present?
No.
Okay. Then now we'll go to hear from Gary Garretson.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, and staff. Uh, my name is Gary Garretson. I live in, um, Southern Vista, thirty-year resident. I saw tonight that we voted, um, how many million dollars for bike lanes for safety of Vista residents? I came over here on Sunset with invested $50,000 plus for nine speed bumps for safety of Vista residents. How many millions have we spent on clean air in the city of Vista for one reason? Safety of Vista residents. This airplane will create the potential of 24/7 365 noise. There will be no mandatory time that they can't land. They will increase air pollution, and there will be future pressure to lengthen the runway to accommodate these planes. We'll have increased flights, and the next thing you know, we have another John Wayne Airport. For those who say it was there when you moved here, if you live on a street, would you oppose a throughway going there? If you have a house that next door has a vacant lot, would you approve and support rezoning to make that a machine shop with eighteen-wheelers? Of course not. That's what you're asking the people of South Vista to live with if you don't approve this resolution. I urge you to listen to the Vista residents and the voters. Do everything you can to stop big aircraft, refuse runway lengthening, prevent increasing pollution, minimize increased danger, and absolutely protect against the increased noisy. People moved here to a small airport, not big money people getting big airport, big airplane in the future. We don't want a John Air, John Wayne Airport. Your priority should be Vista residents, safety, home values, and quality, the quality of life. Please vote yes on this resolution. Protect Vista res, Vista residents, and do not open up Pandora's Box for a future John Wayne Airport. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt Shaker. Followed by Dom Betro.
Thank you for hearing this. My name is Shaker, by the way. Uh, I bought a house in Carlsbad twenty years ago. There was an airport here when I moved. I was told there were rules. I wasn't told they were voluntary. I was just told there were rules, that planes would come in from the east and take off to the west over the ocean. That happens sometimes. Other times, planes go up, circle around, circle around, circle around. It's like watching a World War II movie with the people on the beach in Dunkirk are being strafed. The rules are not real rules, they're not enforced. That's like having a freeway with a speed limit that's voluntary. That would be a very different, uh, traveling proposition than it is now, where there are police that will enforce, that will fine, that will erase, arrest. You're only talking about right now, one airline, but in the newspapers, there's talk of, uh, Amazon putting in a facility. There are talk of other companies coming in, and the more you lengthen the runway, and the more you make it safe for certain planes, if you build it, they will fill it. I urge you not to allow more planes, bigger planes, to come into this area. Thank you.
Dom Betro, followed by Vicky Sayaj.
Good evening, and thank you for, uh, doing this, uh, Mr. O'Donnell and the council. Um, I live in Carlsbad. I live at, uh, south of Palomar Airport Road and Carlsbad Boulevard, right at the water, so I get the planes taking off. You get the planes circling around. I get the noise and the flight path deviations. You get, unfortunately, the environmental impacts from the fuel, and as you'll hear from my friends from San Marcos, that's why I'm wearing their patch here, uh, what they've been experiencing lately. I met with your South Vista group. I've been involved in this for two years, and by meeting other, uh, representatives from HOAs, we now have twenty-four HOAs in what's called the Palomar Airport Action Network. Uh, they represent, they, they don't represent, but their HOAs encompass some 25,000 residents. Most of them are from Carlsbad, but we are developing these new relationships in Vista and San Marcos, because we are all impacted. And what I see with what you're doing tonight is really starting what needs to be done. The county's not gonna stop. They wanna fully commercialize this airport. And they really can't do it because of the CUP with the city of Carlsbad, which is supposed to maintain this as a general aviation airport. But nevertheless, they're gonna push ahead, and they're gonna push ahead by saying devious things like they've done tonight, saying this is just a lease. It's American Airlines who's deciding to land. No, American Airlines can't land if they don't have that contract and that lease with the county, and they shouldn't land because they're in violation of the CUP. This will end up in court, but this is why it's so important that, just like we have built coalitions as citizens, we need the cities that are impacted by this to develop a coalition. The only way this accrues to the benefits of the residents is if we have our city leadership, uh, coming together to tell the county, no, you're not gonna do this. When I first started on this journey two years ago, it was about nuisance and noise. But I gotta tell you, what you heard from the last two speakers are correct. This is now about health and safety. This plane cannot land there. This plane should not land there. And this airport does not have the capacity for this type of commercialization. And why is it being done anyway with the millions, billions of dollars we're putting in of our tax money into San Diego International, and now the county is going out to Brownfield? It doesn't have to be this way, but we've gotten no cooperation, I can tell you. This voluntary noise, uh, abatement is a joke, and, uh, the county is not serious about protecting our health and safety, so I hope you will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Dom Betro, followed by Vicky Sayaj. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Vicky Sayaj, followed by Sid Rothenberg.
Okay. Good evening, Vicky Sayaj. I'm president of Citizens for a Friendly Airport, C4FA. I had a nice speech written, but after the county's presentation, I'm gonna throw it out the window because I need to correct some alternative facts. But first, a short hip, history lesson for this, um, this body. In the late seventies, the county came to the city of Carlsbad and begged the city to annex Palomar Airport. They needed services, sewer, water, and public safety. It's hard to run an airport when you can't flush toilets or wash your hands. City agreed to annex the airport on the condition that the city of Carlsbad, not the county, had final land use authority regarding issues of, of the airport. The county knowingly and willingly signed on the dotted line and waived their land use immunities. The city chose to, to manage their land use authority by the way of the conditional use permit, and so Conditional Use Permit 172 was born. The things that are on that list, all the exclusions, they can go about their daily business, and the city doesn't need to get involved. Couple of things are not on that list. And one is the use of the airport, the designation of the airport. Exactly what these guys are telling you is A-OK. Second thing are runway extensions or new runways. Now, for a while, things worked really well, and everybody worked together, and then the institutional memories kind of faded. And for about the last twenty-five years ago, the county did whatever the heck they wanted, and for years, the city left, let them. And then we sued, and we won. The courts reaffirmed Carlsbad's authority. There's no more room for confusion. Any change in the airport use must be supported by the city of Carlsbad through the Conditional Use Permit. Correction of one of the alternative facts. In that Conditional Use Permit, the airport is a general aviation basic transport. It's still there on the FAA website. It is not a commercial airport, can't be. And if they call it so, it's not a valid, uh, calling. The, uh, Embraer 175 is a big, huge mama jet. Uh, it's a C3. The FAA uses the same design, um, uh, recommendations as a D3. A D3's a 737. That airport can't handle any of those things. The pretzels that they have to twist themselves in to get this thing to land and take off and turn are phenomenal. It would make a yoga guru, um, very proud. The FAA grant assurances, number 22E, the economic nondiscrimination. That means if, if American Airlines comes in, Delta can come in, United can come in, whoever else wants to come in, everybody and their, and their brother can come in, and they can't say no. And then, oh, we'll have a safety issue of their own making, and then, oh, we'll need to expand the airport and make a bigger runway and turn it into John Wayne South because it's dangerous. So please, pass the resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sid Rothenberg. Followed by Stephanie Jackal.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I am in opposition to approval of this resolution. I know there's strong feelings on either side. I appreciate hearing from the aviation folks, the, the errors in this document. I remember the time when there were commercial air flights out of Palomar, which I really appreciated, and I did use quite frequently. Uh, much nicer, as councilmember O'Donnell said, to drive five minutes to the Carlsbad and get on a plane and get to LAX or Phoenix in this case. I think we need to look ahead to the future. It's like building the housing, and we're gonna have higher density. So there's gonna be more demand for flying in airports. It is a pain to drive down to San Diego. Do you look at the fact that there may be noise and pollution from a, an airplane, but in the future, when our population is, increases as much as been suggested, that is nominal compared to what's gonna be created with the noise of our automobiles and the pollution from our automobiles and, and trucks and et cetera? So I think, and it's cited that the runway is too short, and we're building all these distribution centers, Amazon, Google, UPS, whatever's gonna happen there. But that's the wave of the future, and we're all being told we have to consider the wave of the future and the housing density, and whether I like it in my neighborhood or not, which I don't. But the city council has voted that in my neighborhood, we're gonna have, I'm gonna have roughly 500 more units and go up and down Kwahomi Road, and I have to live with it. So I know that it's not nice for the people that are in the, as a pathway of, of the airport, but I do, and it's hypothetical. We don't know if there'll be more and more cargo jets or Delta, um, the other airlines joining suit, but it would be the wave of the future. And we have to sort of, I think, face that, whether I like it or not, and consider the demands that are gonna be put on this airport in the future, probably for having more commercial traffic to come to the North County, which we do not currently have. So thank you.
Stephanie Jackal, followed by Tazina Zam.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, on behalf of South Vista Communities, I would like to thank councilmember Dan O'Donnell very much for bringing this resolution to the council agenda. I won't go into the fruitless discussions South Vista Communities has been having with Palomar Airport managers and the FAA since 2008 to mitigate the reg, negative impacts of airplane overflights visited upon the South Vista residents. The airport and the FAA each say the other is responsible. We should talk to them. Nothing is done. But this latest proposal for commercial flights into Palomar Airport isn't just a negative impact. It will destroy the quality of life of South Vista residents. The proposed Embraer jet is too big, the runway is too short. Bingo. The nose of the camel to enlarge the runway. Then bingo, not just two flights a day, but six, ten? This, then we no longer have a B2 airport but John Wayne. This must not happen. We urge you to approve this resolution, please. Tell the county not to do this to the residents of South Vista and Carlsbad and Oceanside and San Marcos. If the county does not approve the office space, if that's all the county can approve, uh, for American Airlines, will American Airlines still be able to fly? Tell the county no. Do not allow the airport to destroy our quality of life. Thank you.
Tazina Zam, followed by Pia Romano.
Good evening, council. I've lived in Vista for twenty-two years, not very far from some of you, where some of you live. Um, I just wanna ask you to support this resolution. Uh, over the years, Palomar Airport has gone above and beyond in violating our community's safety and security, and their, uh, noise violations have gone up. There was noises, when we, when we started talking about this about over a decade ago, there was talks of noise abatements, which were not followed by Palomar Airport. Then there were regulations set in place for a sixty-passenger flight taking off. Now the, the ask is for a seventy-six-passenger flight to take off. Now we're asking for the six, seven o'clock quiet time to be moved to 6:15 and 6:30. What next? Commercial flights coming in and out of Palomar Airport? Any odd hours of the day? Even San Diego Airport follows a very strict quiet time. I just flew out of there last weekend, and they were very mindful of not flying before 6:30 because that's what the regulations have been set over there. But if we let American Airlines take this step, go and move our quiet hours, what next? So please support this resolution. Thank you.
Pia Romano, followed by Terry Brady, and then Ron Byrd.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you for holding this meeting tonight and allowing us to speak about Palomar Airport. Thank you, Dan O'Donnell, for bringing this forward. I moved to Vista seven years ago, and there was an airport there, there is an airport there, and I thought, well, it can't be that bad. And every night, every morning, flight after flight after flight, I see my backyard covered in soot. They don't care. The pilots don't care. They can land and take off whenever they want. It just doesn't matter. So I urge you to please sign this resolution and prevent any of these flights, hopefully prevent any of these flights from increasing. And thank you very much for this opportunity. This has been one of my pet peeves about living in Vista, and I hope by signing this, that can bring the Board of Supervisors more awareness to what is needed and to listen to the citizens in Vista and what we need for our peace of mind and our property values. Thank you so much.
Terry Brady, followed by Ron Burden.
Hi. I came here tonight, hopefully, to commend you for approving this blocking of American Airlines' contract. I live in San Marcos, in Palomar Estates West, so we are at the highest point on the hill, and the planes are now flying directly over us at very low altitudes. It's so loud that you can't carry on a conversation at the pool. Some of our homes literally shake from the planes flying over. Another resident in our park actually had a plane dump jet fuel because it was afraid of, it was having issues with its landing. No investigation, no cleanup, no concern from the Airport Advisory Commission when she told them that this had happened. She could smell the fumes for two weeks, and we all wonder, one errant cigarette butt, what was going to happen? I mean, there are safety issues, and I lived where I, for five years, I never hardly heard a plane because they're flying over the commercial area in the far end of our park. Now, they're flying right down the middle, and they fly at all hours of the night, 2:00 in the morning, 1:00 in the morning, 12:00 in the morning, 6:00 in the morning, regularly. And they say they have no control, and yet, for five years, it wasn't happening. They're trying to pump more and more planes through that thing, and they've kind of written us off as expendable, is how it appears to us. And I just think there are more safety issues that are not being looked at, just based on the people that are sneezing and sick in my park already. You used to have to hose your landoff every couple of weeks, all that black carcinogenic lead dust. Now, it's two days, and I go like this, and I don't want to sit out on my porch because I'm going to dirty my clothes. I mean, it's an obvious, dramatic difference in the last two years. And so I just hope that your steps here help to protect the citizens of Vista and urge other cities like San Marcos to do the same. Thank you.
Ron Burden.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I should be here in support of this airport. I was a builder, a contractor, for 25 years, active member of the Builders Exchange. My father was an aerospace engineer, a lawyer, an accountant, a senior cost analyst on the B2 bomber project. My brother's been a pilot for 40 years, 25 years of which he's been a flight instructor. I should be in support of airports. I love airports. I love economic growth, and I love prosperity. And these kind of things do bring prosperity, but this airport does not. And the issue that we're seeing, as Terry said, I live in the same community as her in Palomar Estates West. It's one of the highest impacted communities on that flight path. And about a year ago, I started noticing that the soot accumulation was getting worse. And it's only starting to get worse because they're getting these bigger planes in there. And they've been flying Category 6 planes, or Category C airplanes, into that airport, which is only rated for Category B planes, in the intention of being able to get approval for a Category C plane. So now, we're feeling the effects. So think of us as a canary in the coal mine for everybody else in the community. That soot buildup is going to start spreading everywhere. And I don't know if you're aware of these charts, but in their environmental impact studies, they have a couple of really nice, colorful charts that show the flight paths. And the way that the planes have to come in, so they come in from the west, they fly all the way out to Valley Center, and they make a turn out there, and then they come back and make their approach. That's an extra 20 miles in the air in our community that's not necessary. These planes, because there's so many of them now, they have to take them all the way out there to keep them spread out. This isn't right. So I'm in support of the resolution, and I hope that they don't continue with the expansion as planned. You know, so that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now close the opportunity for public comment on this item, and we'll go to Councilmember Joe Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really, my only question was for Mr. Abbott. Mr. Abbott, I have a word with you, please. And I really appreciate all of the residents, because I'd like to figure out what's up. So there is a CUP with the city of Carlsbad, having to do with the Conditional Use Permit. And basically, what the CUP says is that there are use restrictions within that CUP. I believe that your presentation stated that you have no use restrictions. So even if we, and mind you, I love the idea of supporting my South Vista residents, so I'm in support of this, but even in the event we do this resolution, according to you, the county can still do whatever they want as far as the use of this facility?
Sure, yeah, council member. So I can speak to the CUP, and from our perspective, it's more the development of Palomar Airport.
Got you.
And the fact that if we want to change the design of the airport, which is currently a B2, and do any projects that take us to a C3 airport, we do have to go back and get certain things approved, not only from the Board of Supervisors, but beyond. So operationally, Palomar Airport has been a commercial service airport. It's called a Part 139 certificated airport by the FAA for decades. And, you know, we've had commercial service airport there. So we don't think that the CUP speaks to operations of the airport, more the future development of the airport. And with the American Airlines operations, the designation of the airport doesn't change. We remain a B2 airport. We don't lengthen runways. We don't change taxiways. It's the existing infrastructure that American will use.
What about the stipulation of the amount of passengers that was spoken about tonight? Is that we have a stipulation of 60 passengers, and the new flight, I guess, is going to be a 76 passenger? Is that in violation of the CUP, or is there no limit like that?
Yes, sir. Not with the CUP. Now, there is a county policy called F44 that speaks to the amount of seats on an airplane. Currently, the policy says 70 seats. That policy originates from the 1980s. First, it said 10 seats, and then it was amended to 30, and then it was amended to 70. So what we're going to ask the county Board of Supervisors to do is consider either amending, waiving, or repealing F44. And the reason for that is when we did our master plan in 2021, it was a really comprehensive plan that gives us a guide on how we develop the airport and so forth, and that was stakeholder involvement and outreach and so forth. And so the board will ask them to consider what to do with F44, either...
Okay, so they can change that policy arbitrarily with no input from outside cities as far as that goes?
It is a county board policy.
Okay. The other question I have for you, Mr. Abbott, which is extremely concerning, is soot in yards every two days, people not being able to sit in their chairs, and jet fuel dumped out of airplanes that goes into people's backyards that you guys don't address. In the event these residents have issues, because this is happening right now, is there somebody at your office that actually takes care of consumer complaints with, you know, environmental issues and also safety concerns? I mean, dumping jet fuel out of your jet... I hadn't heard anybody having jet fuel dumped on their house, but that does not sound very appealing, in my opinion.
Yes, sir. We do have a department within airports that, you know, takes those calls and addresses those as they come in. More than happy to look into the soot issue and the dumping of jet fuel. I don't remember the last time that has happened, but we'll...
Appreciate it. And if for the residents that are here, they contact Palomar Airport direct with any issues like that, and there is an investigative arm at that airport that does it, or?
Yeah, we could start with Palomar Airport, and then we kind of divvy that out into, is it noise? Is it low-flying aircraft? Is it these types of issues?
Or environmental pollutants that are constant, that are affecting people's health and whatnot?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I think that's good news, and I would hope that our governing board here would definitely help any of our residents that are suffering from any type of environmental pollutants that are affecting their health. I appreciate you being here. As far as I'm concerned, I feel like Mr. O'Donnell has a really good finger on the Pulse Pass community over here. South Vista Communities, I've been selling houses over there since the mid-'90s, and I have also flown out of Palomar Airport as a commercial, so I know it's been done before. But if you are our residents over there, and you're experiencing health issues and sit in your backyard, and, you know, we're not making things happen, I want to support the resolution as is, and hopefully, it makes some type of impact, whether you continue to build or not. At least you see, our residents are unhappy. They want to be serviced. They want to be taken care of when issues arise. So if nothing else comes about this, at least we're pounding on your door to let you know, we have unhappy residents who this is adversely affecting their quality of life, and we're going to need some help moving forward.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Of course. Mr. Abbott, I've got some questions for you, too.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, you said if you want to increase the size of the runway or make other changes, that you would need to come back for approval. Does that mean from the people of Carlsbad?
So that means back to the Board of Supervisors with the county.
Okay.
So we're currently a B2 airport. The approved master plan allows us to go to a B2 enhanced, which means 200 feet off the end of the runway, and the installation of what's called EMAS, which is Engineered Material Arresting System. So it's a structure at the end of the runway that would arrest an aircraft if it was to go too long. So anything beyond a B2 enhanced, we have to go back to the Board of Supervisors for approval to do those projects. We're not interpreting the CUP as having to go back to the city of Carlsbad. That's a discussion they're having right now on whether to change the general plan and zoning requirements and so forth. So I won't get in, interrupt those discussions with the city, but we don't interpret that as something that the county needs to do to move forward with what the master plan says and how the master plan was approved.
What I'm trying to understand is what the significant differences will be between the commercial service that's being proposed by American and the four different iterations of commercial service that have happened at Palomar in the past. We had United Express. We had California Pacific. What was the one that started with a T? Was there for a few years?
Yeah, I can't recall.
Then we had American Airlines a long time ago.
Yes, sir.
So I'm just trying to understand. So obviously, these airplanes, does this Embraer 175, does it land at Palomar? How many landings does it have? I mean, is this...
There's not current regular operations of the E175. We currently have operations from the E135 and the E140.
I assume those are smaller aircraft.
Yep, slightly smaller. GSX uses those aircraft. But the E175 is almost a good fit for this size airport. And I'm not sure where the runway lengths came from in the resolution, but there are also different models of the E175. There's an extended-range model that does require a little more runway. But regardless, the model that they're going to use, the aircraft has a range of, I think, 1,000 or 1,200 nautical miles. Phoenix is a fraction of that, so they take less fuel, the aircraft weighs less, and so the runway requirements are all factored in. And that's what American has to do. They have to justify this with the FAA. They'll give them their flight plans and how they're going to do this. FAA evaluates it, and then the FAA certifies the operation.
What impact do you think that these resolutions of opposition from cities in the area will have on the FAA and their approval? Will they consider them?
No, the FAA won't consider these types of discussions. They will consider the aircraft operations that American wants to do. So the FAA is supportive of commercial service at Palomar Airport. They have. They've given us millions of dollars in grants to build terminal facilities and parking facilities and so forth. So the commercial service activity is something that the FAA supports for us, Palomar Airport.
Could you talk about the... So there is not a history of a commercial aircraft or an aircraft as large as this V175? There is not a history of something as heavy or as, you know, with the horsepower? I don't know how you measure aircraft, not an airplane guy. What is the measurement? How would we generically describe it? Would it be the thrust of the engines? Would it be the noise, decibel output? What kind of measurements are significant when considering the impact on the neighbors?
Good question, mayor. And we categorize aircraft. This aircraft falls in the C3 category. We have C3 category aircraft currently using Palomar Airport. There's some Gulfstreams. There's some Bombardier aircraft that currently use the airport that are comparable in size. We measure wingspan. It's about a 100-foot wingspan. We measure maximum takeoff weight of aircraft. There are similar aircraft that currently use the airport that have similar takeoff weights. We did take a look at the noise signature. It's very comparable to the aircraft that are currently using the airport. We have some pretty large business aviation aircraft using Palomar Airport, and it's in the same category.
You say it's very comparable. Get specific with me on that, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, sir.
Does the E175 exceed some of the, most of the aircraft there? I mean, is it, if I were to plot it out on a graph, is it amongst the highest? If we were to just look at E175 and all the other aircraft that are using Palomar?
Which component of that are you asking about, mayor?
I'm saying, does it significantly outstrip the average jet aircraft that's...
No, sir. Not significantly.
Okay, just a little bit?
Yep. It's very comparable.
What about this issue with the 70-passenger limit? And so that's a limit that's been proposed by the Board of Supervisors?
Yeah, that is a board policy, F44. It states a lot of different things. It states how many based aircraft are at the airport, runway heading and so forth. And one of those elements of that policy is seats on an aircraft. And right now, it says 70, max of 70. American wants to use an aircraft that has 76 seats. So that's one of the things we have to take to the Board of Supervisors to either change that, repeal it, or waive it for American Airlines.
And does your office have the ability to appeal, to, what you just said, waive that?
Not without Board of Supervisor approval.
Okay.
We have to take that to the board.
What if they took six seats out of the airplane for that back and forth? Would that then make it magically compliant?
Well, we've asked them if they can take six seats out of the airplane for American Airlines and other airlines, of course. It's all a revenue model, and that's the typical configuration for their aircraft, is 76 seats.
So they didn't say no? They didn't say yes?
No, they said no.
Okay, understood.
Yes, sir.
The other issue, I mean, and what was the reason that the Board of Supervisors established that limit on 70 seats? Was it because a class of aircraft greater than that was expected to create a noise disturbance in the surrounding community? And while you're thinking about answering that, when is the Board of Supervisors going to address this question?
Yes, sir. We're taking this to the board. December 11th is when the agenda item will go to the Board of Supervisors. So it's both the lease agreement with American and addressing the board policy F44. The history on it, that's a good question. I think when these seat shifts happened, it was because the aircraft at the time, that was typical for a regional commercial service airport. This Embraer 175 has really kind of changed the game and allowed airports like Palomar to accommodate this kind of service. So I think it was just a progression from 10 seats to 30 seats to 70 seats. Advances in technology of aircraft was part of it. And so that's kind of what I understand the history of the board policy F44 was.
My last question is about, actually, I have two more questions. The 6:15 a.m. limitation, how long has that been in effect? It's currently, in the VNAP, it's 7:00. And so what is the... I know that GA pilots can take off before that, right?
Yes, sir.
And how many are taking off before that?
There's a handful.
At Palomar?
Yeah, there's a handful that do take off before 7:00. You know, corporate aircraft have, you know, when they have to get to their destinations, whether it be across the country or overseas, you know, they have to factor that into when they take off. So there are a handful, you know, that the VNAP is voluntary. We ask people to abide by those hours. We can enforce that. A little bit of... We can enforce that, a little bit of history there. Airports like San Diego International and John Wayne, they, they restricted and set curfews before the ANCA Act of 1990. So any airport before 1990 who had those restrictions in place were able to keep them. Any airport after 1990 is not allowed to set curfews, restrictions, penalties and so forth. And so that's where Palomar Airport falls. So that, that, that is why our, our program is voluntary. We do what we can to educate the, the flying community. Please don't, you know, fly outside these hours. Please follow these traffic patterns and so forth. But we even send letters to pilots who, who, not violate, who fly outside the, the V NAP hours, asking them to kind of change their patterns and so forth. So it is seven. We have asked American Airlines if they could fly later. Can they push it to seven? For them, they showed us kind of routes that they're going to take to get people from the North County and Palomar Airport into their system in Phoenix and then beyond. That's just what, you know, that's the schedule that's required in order to make those additional flights. Cause a lot of the, the destinations won't end in Phoenix. It'll go into their network in Phoenix and then go, go beyond. So they need that 6:15 start time. And previous airline service did depart before seven when we had airline service before.
Finally, I'm honestly, I'm on the fence here. I've got a lot of neighbors that live right in my neighborhood that are going to be unhappy with me if I don't support this. But, but honestly, I, you know, we, we've had commercial service there for many years. We're on a break from it right now.
Yes, sir.
But I, could you talk about what you think the economic impact to our region is and?
Yeah, you know, a gentleman from the, from the Chamber, the East County or the North County Economic Development Office joined me in a, in a media piece that kind of spoke to the benefits of every time that plane lands in the area, it's going to generate, you know, thousands of dollars in economic activity, either from lodging, transportation, people eating in the restaurants. So it's not just a one way street, people going from here to Phoenix and beyond. It's people coming to the community and using this as well. So, you know, the economic benefits of this are just, are pretty far reaching. And I will just kind of add that noise, we take it as our responsibility to be the best neighbor that we can. And so I'm not going to dismiss the noise complaints. I think that is a subject that we have a lot of, we can improve and so forth. So we, we take noise issues very seriously and, and that's never going to be not a focus for us. And then the American Airlines coming in is kind of its own, own issue. And as a commercial service airport funded by the FAA, we just can't restrict those operations even if we wanted to, so.
How many flights a day is American proposing?
Two flights a day, two, two departures and two arrivals.
And what's the discussion about the potential for that to evolve?
They haven't mentioned anything and we haven't, no indication that they're going to increase that now.
How many did United have when they operated there?
I think a couple. Yeah, I think at one point we had eight or 10 commercial flight operations back in the late 90s, early 2000s. And so you're right, Mayor, it has been a long time since we've had commercial service at Palomar Airport, which is, I think, you know, is a little bit of, is a little bit of the issue here, so.
Is that soot on my patio furniture? Is that from the airplanes?
I don't think so. We can.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I don't, you know what? I, I, no, well, look, I, I, I don't know if it is or it isn't. I never thought about it before, but I absolutely have the same problem. I just thought it was dust in the, I never related it to the aircraft before. Okay, if you, if you would please, if you would please respect our, our policies to maintain decorum. Okay, Mr. Abbott, I guess I can't delay anymore.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Council.
I, I know I'm going to make some neighbors mad. I'm, I'm leaning against this right now. I think, you know, the business park, we have businesses that would like to have access to flights that would connect them with the rest of the country. You know, sometimes I fly from San Diego to Phoenix. You know, and I don't fly a lot, but honestly, when I go see my mom in Indiana, sometimes I fly from, you know, through, through Phoenix. So it might, it might be nice and it might save some vehicle miles on the road getting down to San Diego and some congestion. Let me tell you, when, when I, when I fly east, I get up early, usually get up at, you know, like three in the morning. It's two flights a day, maybe it's going to be eight. I think if they come, if there's going to be a lengthening of the runway, I'm not sure, you know. I, I don't think this is necessarily going to lead, we've been talking about this for 15 years, this lengthening of the runway. And it's not happening, it hasn't happened. I live, you know, I'm, I'm 12 doors down from Pia. So we're in the exact same neighborhood. I, I don't know. I, I think there's a lot of economic development reasons to say yes to the air travel. I, I'm concerned and I, I kind of wish we were coming here after the board because I would expect the board to get, I, I would like more information on why the 70 seat policy. I'm sure it's basically a, a, a very generic limitation of the size of the aircraft. Why else? Why else would they care about the number of seats, right? It has to do with the size of the aircraft. The other issue is the early flights, you know, it seems like if they left 15 or 20 minutes later or, you know, at 7:00 AM, they could probably do almost as much good to connect. I don't know how many flights they're missing. I mean, I'm assuming it's basically like New York and the East Coast that people are trying to get to. I want to, I haven't, still haven't decided yet, so I'm going to leave it to my council members to convince me here. I'll go back to Councilmember Green.
I actually believe I already went. It's Councilmember O'Donnell's turn, I apologize.
Sorry, I had you next on my list here. Councilmember O'Donnell.
Thank you. Jamie, could you come back up real quick? I've got a couple of questions for you. I appreciate the, the response you've given tonight. I do have a question. Do you guys monitor the air quality around the airport at all?
Yes, sir, we do have monitors at the airport that measures lead in the air. Those are active, those are monitored by our environmental unit. And just to differentiate here, the type of fuel that jets use and American uses does not contain lead. That's, that is the, the fuel that the piston aircraft use. And so there's two different types of fuel. So this type of fuel does not contain lead.
They would not be using lead based fuel. So another question is, has there been an increase in the number of aviation flights coming in and out of Palomar Airport, say in the last five years?
Actually, in the last five years, it's been pretty stagnant. There was actually a decline 10 to five years ago. So aircraft operations, I think now are matching the peak a decade ago. So it's not significant.
And so you answered my question, but you, but I didn't ask it correctly. What are the findings of lead in the air and pollution in the air based on the air quality tests that you're, you're performing at Palomar? Also, where are those, those measurable units placed? Are they downwind or are they upwind? Because I, I think that plays a large factor in how you actually can test the quality of the air.
Yes, sir. Our environmental unit has found that air quality levels have been well within standards, federal standards for air quality. The unit, I think, is placed on the north side, parallel to the main runway, on the airport, inside the fence, just east of our tie down area, if you know where that is on the airport. So I think that's where the monitor sits currently.
And so a lot was made from one of the speakers tonight and even you brought up the word voluntary. So all of these things are voluntary, which is the argument of why none of these would actually violate anything. But when it's voluntary, it also doesn't stop them or anybody really from flying out at any point in the evening or in the, in the middle of the night or the daytime. How many, how many flights are going to come in from American or whoever else might decide to, to perform service there? Is that correct?
It is voluntary, sir. And so they, you know, aircraft, especially GA aircraft can use the airport anytime they want. And we do have a handful of flights in the middle of the night. Now, American has established a schedule. They're going to have to let us know if they want to deviate from that or add flights and so forth. And so that'll, that'll come back to us. But right now it's those two flights a day.
And then from a noise, noise pollution standpoint, so are, do you work alongside the PAC quite a bit?
I do, yep.
So what is the correlation between noise spikes? So I, I know that a few months ago I had sent data from where our noise catchers are here in Vista, our noise monitors. And the argument was made by somebody on that commission that, oh, it's just the fire engines going off. And so was there a correlation to fire engines or is there a spike in noise that's created by the airplanes?
Well, I think it'd be, it could be both, sir. There can be a spike in an aircraft event using the airport. And it, those monitors are also sophisticated enough to pick up fire engines and other community noise in the area.
The reason I ask that is because I specifically sent the times of when engines were leaving the station to try and correlate the data to noise pollution. And so my question is, and you may not know the answer and it's okay if you don't.
Sure.
My question is, is there a correlation to what the, the noise complaints were? And, and did they, did they mimic the engine's departures? Or is there a genuine noise issue that's taking place?
It's a good question, sir. I don't have that answer for you tonight, but I can get that for you.
Okay, I appreciate it. That's all. I appreciate it. Listen, I, everything I have mentioned, so pollution is a big thing and I know that it's not, anything that's not going to be shared and, and Mayor, I can tell you, I get it all over my car. I wash my car and two days later it's covered in soot. Air quality is a huge issue. I know that while the, the larger airliners may not be using lead fuel, I do know that all of the smaller engines do. And I don't think there's a requirement by the FAA or even by the airport that they don't use it. So they are free to operate with lead based fuel at their discretion. And so that's another issue I have beyond the noise pollution. The quality of life has been mentioned. And so when I talk about our residents here in Vista, it's not just South Vista, it is all of Vista, but it's also our neighboring communities, it's neighbors in Carlsbad. We have people from communities from all over North County in the 78 corridor right now. Again, I bring up the voluntary because it was made such a huge issue of how it's voluntary. So it's not a violation, but when, when you have voluntary times, they are free to come and go as they want. I also, if, if it is true what was said from a public comment, that if we open it up to one airline, that means that we have to open it up to every airline and we can't discriminate against their ability to operate out of this airport. And so now you're not talking four flights a day, you're talking however many airlines, time four, five, six, whatever it could be. Beyond that, you know, we all talk about local control and how much we love local control. And yet we have a county Board of Supervisors, which only has one representative on that board, that is going to dictate the policy for a city that very much does not want to expand this airport, nor does it want to expand back into commercial airlines. I've, I've talked to other council members that have shared those sentiments with me in Carlsbad. I, I won't name names because I don't want to violate any, any Brown Acts for future council meetings for them. But it's, it is clear that the public does not want this. And so for me, and I see that when my residents complain about it, when I, when I see and hear the noise pollution, when I see the pollution happening in my driveway, it is a good enough reason for me to, to stand in support with the community and not support the expansion of including a new airliner or the expansion of the runway at any point. So that's where I stand on it. I'm going to stick with my residents, I'm going to stick with our community, I'm going to stick with our city. And I am going to make a motion to approve this resolution and I appreciate the dialogue tonight.
Councilmember Contreras.
I'll second, thank you.
So I want to make everybody mad. I'm not going to vote for it. There's, there's 500 flights a day. I just looked it up. There's 500 flights a day going in and out of Palomar. It's the second busiest airport with one runway in the nation, which I didn't know until I just looked it up. But I, I just, it feels like we're lashing out. I, I hear a lot of very legitimate complaints about the airport. But it feels like we're lashing out at the commercial aviation component, which is the only opportunity. I've never flown on a, a private jet. I don't know if any of you have. I've never been privileged to do that. Joe, Joe, Joe flies around with the band. You know, we're never going to get to use this airport. I've never flown in or out of Palomar. I've, I've never done that. So, you know, I've, I've been to the airport, but only for lunch at the, at the restaurant there. Joe's going to take me on a trip. No, I, I just, okay, so let's say it is eight flights. Let's say it's 12. There's 500 flights and we're saying that the airport is going to be off limits to regular working people, to the employees that are coming in and out of our business park. It's going to be off limits to all the working people, all the middle class people. You can't fly in and out of there, but the people that can afford a G 600 are able to fly in and out of there 500 times a day. But we're going to deny our, our businesses access to flights that might actually improve, you know, their economic viability. It's a tough decision. I looked through all of the emails that you submitted. I did not receive a single email about this to my email. And I, most of the emails that were submitted came from Carlsbad, not from Vista. There were a good number of people from Vista. I got a good number of people right here that are not going to be happy with me. They live right in my neighborhood and they're my good friends and supporters. And I apologize to them for not being with them on this, but well, I, I gotta explain. I know, I don't want to call the vote, but I gotta explain why I am where I am on this because I think I just, I owe them the respect of explaining why I'm coming down on this side. Now, I do want to have the soot on Dan's car tested and I, no, I'm dead serious about this. I'm going to call somebody from the county, not the airport department. And somebody, we need to get somebody from the environmental, if that's a thing, I want to know about that. Cause I, that's news to me and I, I am very interested in that. So I want to make sure we have good air quality. But I just don't think that the two flights and striking out at the commercial, when it sounds like, and I, and I heard something you said, you know, we're frustrated with the GA traffic, the general aviation traffic at Palomar, but we can't do anything about that. And here we are, we're going to, we're going to deprive all the, the middle class people and working class people access to an airport that's 15 minutes down the road from us that we might get to use if there was commercial traffic there. So that's where I'm at. I think it's important economically. So, all right, motion is second, please cast your votes. Oh, do we need, should I push the abstain button for Deputy Mayor? Okay. You'll record her, we'll, we'll announce and record her vote as being absent. Okay, that is approved with three votes in favor, one vote against, and Deputy Mayor Melendez is recorded as absent. With that, we are going to have one more opportunity for oral communications from anybody on Zoom who was not given the opportunity because of a technical difficulty earlier this evening. So this is the, going to be the final opportunity for oral communications. For those that did not have the opportunity to speak, each speaker has three minutes. Please use the raise your hand feature, press star nine to indicate that you'd like to speak. Do we have any speakers on Zoom? Okay, seeing no speakers on Zoom, we will now go to comments. If I could ask everybody, we're not quite done with our meeting, so just take your conversations just outside the council chambers. If, you, I apologize, we'll, we'll, we're going to be done very shortly and I'd love to talk to you if you want to wait just about five minutes. Would you like to wait? Okay, wait five minutes and, and I'd be happy to speak to you. Any comments from our city clerk's office? City Attorney, Mr. Conley.
Happy birthday, Joe Green, Saturday, November 2nd.
All right, happy birthday, Joe Green. Very good. Councilmember O'Donnell.
I'll second that happy birthday. Just a real quick, and I mean 30 second recap, we had a Cal Cities Convention that we went to this past week. Obviously you always get to go to the different sessions that are there, which are great. But one of the things I learned there is that there are cities that are literally bankrupt and have zero dollars in their reserve in the city, in the state of California. And so I, I came away from that with two different things. One, I am so proud of the fact that this council has put a reserve in place to make sure that we do not fall prey to Cala spending and, and issues that might come up. The second thing I came away from this, this Cal Cities Retreat was that we have the best staff in the state of California. And I, I know that without question, we have the best staff in the state of California because the amount of people that I talk to, not just in North County, but throughout the state that envy what we have on such a lean working staff in Vista is commendable to all of you. So thank you all for your very, very hard work. Ally, I love you as always. Thank you for letting me serve on this council and I hope you all have a great night.
Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you, everyone. Early happy birthday to Councilmember Green. And I hope everybody has a good night. If you feel like you want to make a difference in Vista tomorrow and pick up some trash, here at La Sanación Por Un Vista Limpio, have their weekly trash pickup tomorrow. If you need to get in contact with them. If you need to get in contact with them, you can always let me know. You can find them on Instagram as well. And outside of that, I hope everybody has a great rest of your night.
Councilmember Green.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the birthday wishes. I am glad to make it another year around the sun. Getting old is awesome. Happy Taco Tuesday to everybody within the city. If you have not had a Korean barbecue taco from 508 Tavern, I highly recommend you have one. Also, earlier today, I hosted 125 third graders from Casita Elementary School, right here in the city of Vista. And we toured all of our different departments. I called it organized chaos and herding cats. I would love to thank Emel de Huerta, Josh Sino Cruz, and London Adams for their assistance in that. I also liked a second that I went to the League of California Cities and heard everybody so jealous of our amazing staff. I think it's because of the spectacular council they get to work with. But again, I'm biased to the council I work with. So Jen Green, I love you. Community, thank you for having me. I got one more meeting up here for you. I'm going to work hard. I'm going to love you. But let's go, Vista. Mad love. Have a great night. I'm out.
Thank you, Councilman. And again, happy birthday to you. Early happy birthday. This Saturday is the last Fire Department Open House as part of the Fire Safety Month. From 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, stop by Station 6 at 6:51 East Vista Way to meet our firefighters, paramedics, EMTs, and staff dedicated to serving and protecting our community. Families can learn safety tips, tour the fire station, and see the department's fire trucks and ambulances. The kids get to climb into the cabs, and they love it. Lots of kids have really, really enjoyed these events.